Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the March 12th City of Placerville City Council Meeting. We're glad you're here. Will you please all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Here.
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 Councilmember Yarborough.
Thank you. Okay, we have no ceremonial manners, matters, no closed session report. We will move on to the adoption of the agenda. I have one change I want to suggest, and that is moving 12.3 to the end at 12.5. My understanding is one of the consultants is arriving at an airport at 6:00 and might be available if we push that a little later.
Yeah.
Did you have some?
Yeah, that's correct. And we'd also request that prior to that item, we take a short break. We're going to get them on the phone, our two consultants, so, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, any other discussion?
I would move the agenda with the suggested change.
I'll second.
Okay, on favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, passes unanimously. We will move to six, 6.1, Brief Comments from the City Council. Councilmember Gottberg, we'll start with you.
I ran the Spirit of Benny 5K race here in Placerville on Saturday morning, which benefit New Morning Youth and Family Services. And it was a really nice event to have here in the city along the El Dorado Trail, starting kind of over by the Clay Street Bridge.
Great, thank you. Sounds fun. Vice Mayor Clarici?
I have nothing.
Councilmembers?
Nothing today?
Neither do I, so we'll make that quick and keep it moving. 6.2, we are going to receive an update on the Placerville Wildfire Safety Day Event. It says Mr. Morris, but I'm pretty sure what it was.
And I'm just going to pass it off to Mr. Acuna, who's here tonight, so.
Well, good evening, distinguished council members. Good evening, Mr. and Madam Mayor. Nice to see all of you again. And welcome back to an old friend's, Mr. Steve Yule, who is filling in for our Recreation and Parks Department while they look for a new director. Nice to see him back. Chief Wren, didn't get a chance to say hello. Good evening, sir. All right, well, I'm happy to be here this evening on behalf of the Placerville Fire Safe Council to update you and invite you and encourage you, and hopefully with your great YouTube presence, extend even more people tonight to attend the Third Annual Placerville Fire Safety Day, which is coming up on March 23rd, 681 Main Street, affectionately known as Midtown Mall, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And I'm happy to announce that all our planning is complete. And before I go any further, I would like to formally invite the mayor, council, and the city manager to the 9:00 a.m. ceremony, opening ceremonies. Again, that's on Saturday morning. We will also be joined by Assemblyman Patterson. We hope. Couple, a couple, a couple of other of our electeds do have other obligations, are not going to be able to attend. And you'll see why that's important when I go a little further into our update. The Fire Safe Council has posted the schedule for this year's event online and on all of our flyers. Currently, there are 17 agencies that are planning on displaying and being a part of this year's various demonstrations. This year, in an effort to streamline and better deliver our message, we will have three speakers. And again, that'll all be programmed out, so the folks will be able to decide what time they'd like to drop by Midtown Mall. We'll have Dan Bolster from El Dorado County Transportation. He'll update us on the community preparedness planning. Returning is the Neighborhood Watch Group, excuse me, the Neighborhood Radio Watch Group. And this year, Bob Hess will be presenting for the El Dorado County Amateur Radio Club. And he'll be updating us on their Neighborhood Radio Watch Program and its importance used during emergencies. The recent AT&amp;T outage, when the cell system dropped out and everyone was supposed to use the landline that you're not supposed to have anymore. So, in emergencies, this is where the Neighborhood Radio Watch plays a very important role. We look forward to that update. And we will again have a representative from the State Insurance Commissioner's Office, Mary Beth Bukowski, will be joining us again. She was there last year and provided a great deal of information on all the various topics and struggles that we face as we try and find insurance for, you know, the wildfire issues. So, be interesting to see what Mary Beth has to say this year, so we look forward to that. I'm happy to report that the fire simulation table will be returning, compliments of the El Dorado Hills Fire Department. This year, it will be located in a much improved viewing setting. We were able to get the use of one of the empty business suites, so we have several hundred square feet of light-controlled space for it to be on display. And every hour, the El Dorado Hills Fire Department will run a simulated wildfire impacting a different Placerville neighborhood. The fire simulation program will show how a fire impacts without mitigations, and it's very impressive. They will then go ahead and show that same fire and its impacts with proper home clearing, hardening, and appropriate mitigation action by our fire agency. And again, the differences are stunning. So, we look forward to having that in a greatly improved spot where everybody will be able to clearly see it. And I'm sure we can get it captured so it's on video this year, so it can be shared throughout the year. So, we appreciate that. New this year, in partners with the Diamond Springs, El Dorado Fire District, our El Dorado County Fire will present a hands-on wildfire hose lay fire demonstration. Featuring Chief Cordero and his staff, everyone will be invited to take the hose and knock down the simulated fire. We will have 5,000 gallons of water available with all of the hose equipment used in this situation. The simulation will be with the help of Diamond Springs Fire. They're bringing their large water tender. And what the display will be is a fire crew pulling up in a rural part of Placerville with no fire hydrants, but they need to get the fire stopped. So, you'll be, you will be invited to be a part of this demonstration. They will also have all the various types of wildland firefighting equipment that our county fire department uses. Also, as a part of the display, Tribal Fire has agreed to have their hand crew on site, and they will demonstrate their role in wildfire simulation, in wildfire fighting techniques and the equipment that they need for fire line construction and ultimate control of the fire. So, I would like to invite the council and our other elected officials to be the first hose team Saturday morning to knock down the simulated fire. And then, of course, the, the goal by, you know, with this particular display is to encourage all of our residents to come along and hope, we're hoping to get, you know, quite a turnout of families, and friendly competitions are certainly welcome. And I think that the amount of water that we'll have available, we should have a good time. So, figure out your team, please. Thanks to our, thanks to your sponsorship, we are able to extend our outreach greatly this year. The Placerville Fire Safe Council message will appear on over 90,000 pages by the time we're done, plus all of our various social media posts. That information is part of our mission to be out there working with the larger community to spread the importance of wildfire safety. The Placerville Fire Safe Council hopes you will join us with Smokey Bear and Captain Cow on March 23rd at Midtown Mall. We are proud to announce again, the Placerville Rotary will provide, they will be in attendance and providing their food court. They'll have world-famous Rotary Dogs chips and drinks available all day at no cost to our public. Now, again, this is our third year of open support, and really, really appreciate Rotary stepping up. Let me close, let me close by thanking all the agencies that have joined with us. I'll be back next month to update and provide information on how the event actually went and to properly thank all of the volunteers that are behind-the-scenes part of the Placerville Fire Safe Council. On behalf of all of those members, I'd like to thank you for your support and time. And I also like to recognize our chairman, Mr. David Zelinski, a regionally famous person here. His outreach in the community and his work with veterans is just simply outstanding, and it was this gentleman's persistence several years ago was the reason that we're here today, and we hope to have several hundred people in attendance on the 23rd. And it all started with David coming to a city council meeting. Are there any questions?
Does the council have any questions?
Can we get subs for ourselves, you know, like younger people to do our jobs for us?
The youth city council?
City council? Yes, yes.
Maybe our rec and park?
We can draft people to come and be our crew or something. Mr. Yule, he's in good shape.
Thank you, Mark. I really want to thank the entire Placerville Fire Safe Council. I just know how much time and work they put into putting this event. It's actually a really big deal. It takes a lot of effort, and we really appreciate that. I'm really looking forward to the event. I will be there at 9:00 a.m. I will hold the fire hose.
All right. Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And be sure to submit your team to Clay, and he'll be sure to give me that information. Thank you.
Okay, that completes item six. We will move on to seven, the Consent Calendar. Is there any council member who would like to pull an item?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 7.5.
Okay, that is the self-guided tour for Gold Bug Park. Are there any other items? Seeing none, we will open this to public comment. Does anyone have a comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Sergosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Nell?
Aye, thank you. All right, we will move on to public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matters not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade the individual's personal privacy. 8.1, we'll have oral communication, so anyone who wants to talk to us, step on up to the mic.
Good evening, council members and mayor and Chief Wren and all other officials assembled here. This is the first time I'm speaking to you guys, so my name is Diane Rubinowitz, and I am the president of NAMI El Dorado County, our local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I'd like to tell you about our activities and, in particular, the project we've been working on for the past few years. Consistent with our national and state organizations, we offer education, support, and advocacy to those affected by mental health challenges. We collaborate with the Sheriff Department, probation department, behavioral health, health clinics, and private providers, the hubs, EDCO, and EDOC Continuum of Care. We are an all-volunteer 501(c)(3) organization, offering support groups and classes for families and their loved ones in El Dorado County since 1997. So, after hearing families' concerns about their loved ones' inability to work or go to school, and after volunteering at the upper room for a year, I perceived a gap that could be filled by creating a clubhouse. I had learned about Fountain House, the original clubhouse started 75 years ago during the early phase of my son's illness. I was encouraged by Brian Richard to pursue the idea of a clubhouse, and after studying the entire Clubhouse International website, shared the idea with a few people, and we joined a, we created a working group, and we went to the first training. Clubhouse International came into being 30 years ago to support the proliferation of clubhouses around the world. They set up a system of 37 standards and rigorous training by which clubhouses earn certification. 350 clubhouses in 32 countries apply these standards to offer people living with mental illness opportunities for friendship, employment, housing, education, and access to medical and psychiatric services in a single, caring, and safe environment. Their social and economic inclusion reverses the alarming trends of higher suicide, hospitalization, and incarceration rates associated with mental illness. Here are some facts about the clubhouse. Members are referred by their treatment team, they must be in care of a psychiatrist, and they must be stable on their meds. Members identify goals they want to achieve, and by participating in the clubhouse as responsible working members, they advance in their recovery. Members have a key role in organizing clubhouse activities. Staff and members work together as colleagues. Work, education, and social activities in the clubhouse are meaningful and help members regain self-worth, confidence, and purpose. Clubhouses provide paid employment opportunities, whoops, in local businesses for members who want to work. We help members become successful employees.
Okay, I need you to wrap that up.
Okay, so, we have looked at three different places. We've put in offers on three different places. We're not attached to the one that we've been challenged about, and so we look forward to serving the community with our clubhouse. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Diane.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I have been here before, but for a different reason. Now, I'm here both as a volunteer with our local NAMI as a board member and also as a working occupational therapist in our county. My desire tonight is to share a few stories about my own experiences with folks with mental illness and share some data on the prevalence of mental health needs and the importance of decreasing stigma and increasing awareness and inclusion in our county. The clubhouse overall goal is to provide a supportive community of peers to work on self-generated goals towards independence and quality of life. This is something I've done as an occupational therapist all my life for the last 40 years. I also want to stress the importance of creating a safe space where members will not be judged or excluded. In addition, a clubhouse structure and standards incorporate best practices to achieve these goals. I value increased inclusion, decreased stigma for all people in our community. I worked for 24 years for a nonprofit that served children with developmental disabilities and had inclusive playgroups. The last 10 years of my clinical work served children with mental health needs and sensory challenges. And I also realize, until 1975, children with developmental disabilities could not be in public schools. Now they can, and today I hope to see more options available to all people with mental illness, children and adults alike. My mother was diagnosed with mental illness. She was a warm, caring woman with a neurobiological difference. She worked as an elementary teacher's aide for 15 years and was loved by her students and teachers alike. Two of my colleagues, who are a speech therapist and an occupational therapist, had their own experience of mental illness. One of them was assisted in her recovery by participation in a clubhouse in the Bay Area. According to nami.org, one in five adults experience a mental health illness and one in 20 a severe mental illness. One in six youth between ages 6 and 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. Many in El Dorado County experience or have family members who have mental health issues or illness. We need more evidence-based resources. I believe it's helpful to teach people about mental illness, so people know when they're experiencing their own illness and are aware if their friend or family member has someone, that where they can get help. I have lived in this county for over 30 years, raised children here, helped two grandchildren. I want my children and grandchildren to know about, understand, mental illness is an illness. Given support, structure, understanding, and a sense of belonging, people can be their best selves, and I believe the clubhouse provides these benefits. A diagnosis of mental illness is not a destiny, nor stereotyping people with mental illness is helpful. My desire is to listen to concerns and work together to create a safe environment for all. Wherever we land in Placerville, we want to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jan Benes, and I'm the Executive Director of Clubhouse El Dorado. Today, I wanted to introduce you, to you, two individuals who could not be here today. Their names are Brandon and Jessica. They're members of Connections House in Contra Costa County. Connections House is a clubhouse, which is a model that I have implemented for 10 years, and I am now in the role of Executive Director at Clubhouse El Dorado. I met Brandon in 2012 when he first joined Connections House. At the time, he was 21 and had recently experienced his first psychotic break. He was isolated in his home and only went outside after midnight for essential shopping trips to avoid interaction with other people. When his friend recommended the clubhouse, Brandon was reluctant at first, but gave it a shot. He started by attending an hour a day and quickly increased his attendance to 40 hours a week. We saw so much potential in him and his leadership skills that we recommended that he complete a peer provider course that was being offered by the county. He took the opportunity, and a year later, he not only graduated the program, but he was hired full-time by the organization that was providing the course. Today, Brandon is still employed full-time, got married, bought a house, and has two children. He credits the clubhouse for where he is today, mentioning, mentioning the structure and encouragement as the main factors for his recovery. In 2012, I also met Jessica. Jessica's onset of schizoaffective disorder came much later than Brandon's. Jessica was already working and owned a house when her symptoms set in. With the help of her family, she was able to rent her house out and found a board and care to live in. Jessica was unable to work for over 10 years after her initial hospitalization. She could not find a job because of the gap in her resume and the evolution of the job due to tech advances. She started attending the clubhouse daily, volunteering for tasks that she was most unfamiliar with, to gain experience and hands-on practice with new software. Today, Jessica is a supervisor at a nonprofit, lives independently, and serves on the Board of Directors of Connections House. The reason I wanted to introduce you to Brandon and Jessica is to paint a clearer picture of the types of clients that will be served by Clubhouse El Dorado and to demonstrate that recovery is possible. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share the clubhouse model with you, and we look forward to serving the community.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi. Hello? Is, oh, okay, is it, it's going, okay, it's good. All right, I just had some quick words that I wrote down and I wanted to share. I think that the suggestion of modeling a clubhouse in Placerville, El Dorado County should be taken into serious consideration. Every day, I recognize homeless and mentally ill that struggle to provide basic supplies for themselves, family, animal companions, and friends. Although there are diagnosed citizens who do work and handle accessing necessities and medication, providing a structure of support could add vital assistance for those taking care of an individual's welfare and those that are just learning. Please help acknowledge the importance of a standard clubhouse in our community, something that I believe could help more than just a few.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? Okay, seeing, okay.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. And this sounds like a great program. I hope we can support it. The other thing I wanted to say today was I've been looking as I've gone around Placerville, and I really think our banners are very nice. They really look good. So, yay for us for putting them up there.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we will close that section of public comment. Are there any written communications for public comment?
No, there were not.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to item nine, which are items polled from the consent calendar, and we have 7.5, Consider Increasing the Youth, 6 to 17 Years Self-Guided Tour Rates by $2 from $6 to $8 effective April 1st, 2024. And that will be Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's great to be back. The purpose of this recommendation is to recover increased personnel costs associated with the operation of the city's Gold Bug Park Visitor Program. The city employs part-time personnel to collect fees, distribute smartphones, hand out hard hats, and operate the gift shop, stamp mill, and blacksmith shop. On January 1st, 2024, California's minimum wage increased by 50 cents to $16 per hour. This increase has resulted in an estimated increase in personnel costs in the amount of $6,887.45, thus providing justification for a $2 fee increase to self-guided mine tours at the park. The $2 increase is projected to generate the necessary revenue in the amount of $7,590 to offset increased personnel costs at the park. In conclusion, staff is requesting council to adopt a resolution increasing the youth 16 to 17 years of age self-guided tour rate at Gold Bug Mine from $6 to $8 effective April 1st, 2024. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council members?
No.
Seeing none, we will open this to public comment. If anyone'd like to comment on 7.5. Seeing none, we will bring this back to the council.
Welcome back, Steve, and I will go ahead and move this item.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? None? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Sergosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Nell?
Aye, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move on to item 10.1, Consideration of an Urgency Ordinance prohibiting the establishment of any new tobacco and electronic smoking device retailers within the city of Placerville. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to start just by a brief recap. Back on May 28th of 2019, the city council ratified a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Justice for the 2019-2021 Department of Justice Proposition 56 Tobacco Grant, and the city received an amount of $395,000 as part of that grant. This grant funded education of retailers, schools, parents, and youth on the types of tobacco products and the current laws regarding tobacco prevention, sales, and use, including electronic smoking devices. Also, staff has developed a draft tobacco retail ordinance and a draft tobacco smoking ordinance with the assistance of the county Public Health Division staff. On February 13th, 2024, staff from the El Dorado County Public Health gave a presentation to the city council regarding the current tobacco prevention efforts in El Dorado County and statewide and on local tobacco retail license requirements, local enforcement, including prevention of retail sales of tobacco products to youth, the number of tobacco retailers, distance to schools, and the waste management regulations such as prohibiting single-use electronic smoking devices. So, following the council discussion, the city council directed staff to return with an urgency ordinance to prohibit the establishment of any new, and I want to emphasize, new tobacco retail shops, to allow for the completion of a draft tobacco retail ordinance for consideration by the council. Urgency ordinances may be passed immediately upon its introduction. They also take effect immediately. Urgency ordinances for immediate preservation of public peace, health, or safety must contain a declaration of facts constituting the urgency. The urgency ordinance must be passed by at least a four-fifth vote of the city council. This ordinance, if approved, will be effective for 45 days from its enactment. Any extension would also require a four-fifths vote. Earlier today, the El Dorado County Board of Supervisors adopted a similar extension to their urgency ordinance that extended the moratorium on new tobacco retailer applications for an additional 45 days to allow the public health staff to come back to the board with a draft tobacco retail ordinance. City staff will continue to work closely with the county public health staff in the preparation of the city's draft tobacco retail ordinance. A revision staff would like to make, and it's just one minor revision to the ordinance, the urgency ordinance before you, is as follows. On page 5 of the ordinance, and that's under section 4, the moratorium section, and sub- subsection A, that is under the heading during the term of this ordinance, including any extensions heretofore, revise subsection A to read, "The city and any other city official or employee shall not issue any," adding the word "new," city permit, registration, business license, or approval of any type to a tobacco retailer within the incorporated areas of the city of Placerville." So, staff is recommending that the council adopt the urgency ordinance that would establish a moratorium on the establishment of any new tobacco and electronic smoking device retailers for the protection of the public health within the city of Placerville. With that, that concludes staff's report. Staff is available to answer any questions, and we do have staff available in the audience from the County Public Health Division to answer any questions that may well be more, let's say, complex, and I'll be able to answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have questions from the council? Nicole?
I have a few. So, one is just, as of today, do we know of any new tobacco retailers that we're planning to open up in the next 45 days in the city of Placerville?
We do not have any new...
We're not aware of that. Okay. And then also, if we were to adopt this ordinance, sort of what additional information would we receive in 45 days, and would that include information on the potential economic impacts as well as health impacts of a tobacco retail ordinance, seeing as we've heard a lot about the health impacts but not the economic ones to date?
Yeah, staff is not proposing to conduct any economic analysis of the impact of placing a moratorium on new tobacco retailers.
Okay.
Anyone else? I believe you look like you were going to say something.
Yeah, just want to make clear, I think everybody knows this, but because of the lack of Councilmember Yarborough, this would require all four members to vote in favor of this tonight and to reach the four-fifths vote required, so...
Right. With that understanding, I was going to recommend, you know, there's been a lot of time and effort at the county level, county staff, Health and Human Services, working on this. I think it deserves the full consideration of the council. I don't think that we'll lose anything by pushing this to our next council meeting and getting all of the councils to be able to weigh in on that. I just want everyone to consider that as we move forward. And with that, we will open this to public comment.
My name's Kristen Becker. I'm a program manager in the Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health Division, and I wanted to provide a tobacco use prevention program, program update. So, thank you. So, just today, as Pierre mentioned, the tobacco use prevention program and Public Health presented to the Board of Supervisors with really two priority topics. One was the urgency ordinance that was approved unanimously, was only good for 45 days, and it was coming due. So, one of our major action items was to seek an extension so we could spend more time on a long-term solution, such as a tobacco retail license. And then the other main priority of today's presentation was to seek direction on coming back to the Board of Supervisors with a draft tobacco retail license. And I am happy to report that the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved extending the urgency ordinance, which would extend it out a little over 10 months through the remainder of the year, as well as directed staff to return with a tobacco retail license ordinance draft. And I just wanted to say that we are looking forward to partnering with the city of Placerville and providing support to find a solution that makes sense. We have heard from all the municipalities that there is an interest to all move in the same, if not similar, direction, and we would be happy to work with staff on a draft tobacco retail license and return to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Anyone else?
Good evening. Curtis Wilson, I'm a resident of Placerville as well as a local school superintendent. Again, I was here speaking, I believe, last month in front of this council, and want to thank you again for bringing this forward. And one thing that Kristen said earlier was that getting everybody on the same page, what we call that in education is collective teacher efficacy, and that means when all groups believe in the same process and are working towards the same goal, we have a much better chance of the outcome that's desired. And when I'm seeing the county and the city and the school districts all on the same page and trying to protect our youth, it's nice to see. So, again, thank you to this council for asking public health to come back, present again for us, and I'm looking forward to having all five members up here and hearing this vote and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm Wendy Thomas, and I'm the District 3 Supervisor, and I am just here today in support of our staff, as well as Superintendent Wilson. And I thank you also for being willing to look at what can we do to protect our youth from access to harmful tobacco products. This originally started with Mr. Wilson engaging us and really helping us understand what's happening in our middle schools and even younger, and it was an eye-opening experience to really listen. And, gosh, when I was on the City Council years and years ago, I remember our public health staff coming and introducing this way back then, and so it is high time that we take action. I was very proud that the Board of Supervisors today took our staff's recommendation in a really creative mix of zoning regulations as well as licensing regulations. They came up with a really interesting mix that's not overly onerous in far as infringing on people's rights, but strict enough to make sure that it will help move the needle on protecting our youth against, from either starting or having access to tobacco products. So, thank you, Glenn. We look forward to working with you, because if the city and the county are on the same page, that will be a really good thing, because my fear is, is that by the county taking this action, we don't want to drive retailers into the city limits, and we already have a proliferation of smoke shops and tobacco shops inside the city limits. So, it's really helpful for us to be on the same page. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Supervisor Thomas. Anyone else?
My father was in the Navy, Matsu Rodman, Placerville resident. My father was in the Navy in World War II, and in their meal packets, they gave him a pack of cigarettes at every meal. And he was, needless to say, a two-pack-a-day smoker. Well, he had his first heart attack when my little sister was only about three. He had his second heart attack, and they told him, you know, it might be a good idea if you stop smoking. Yeah, he didn't do it. He had his second heart attack when I was maybe 12, and they told him, Bill, if you want to watch your daughters grow up, you need to stop smoking. Well, he cut back a little. Well, he had his third heart attack when I was in high school, and he passed away when I was a senior in high school, and tobacco is the reason. It was a heart attack. It didn't get him with lung cancer. It got him with a heart attack. So, I would definitely say what we can do to prevent other children, especially our children, getting hooked on this stuff is a good thing to do. So, I would order you not to put this off, but go ahead and pass it. You have four people. I hope that you're all four on the same page on this.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Yes, I would say, you know, I am a bit conflicted on this item, and I'd like to kind of explain why I'm conflicted, so hopefully people can understand that. I do, you know, I very much understand the research studies and the impacts of, you know, having more tobacco retailers on smoking. I also think 21 tobacco retailers in the city of Placerville, which is a very small square-foot area, is a large number of retailers. But I also sort of have, and I do have concerns if, you know, the county passes something and the city doesn't, what does that do? But I guess somewhat from an ideological standpoint, I mean, the sale of tobacco to minors is already illegal. That is not what we are creating an ordinance on. I believe that people should have the freedom to make health decisions for themselves, even if those health decisions are poor, without sort of government regulations on people's health decisions. I know that's maybe not what everybody's views are, but they happen to be mine. And then I also, you know, have concerns, we're talking about on another item tonight, the large number of vacancies we have in businesses in Placerville and the economic impacts of having all of these vacant commercial properties in our city, and I don't know that it's a good economic practice or policy to put even more restrictions on what businesses can operate here when we're dealing with that type of issue. So, at the same time, you know, this is 45 days. I don't think one way or the other, it would have a large impact. We don't have anybody in the queue right now that wants to, you know, do a business in 45 days, and if we think we can get some additional information in that 45-day period, you know, I'm not set on this item in any way, I guess I would say. I could go either direction, but I do, I am conflicted, and that is why. So, I just wanted to kind of explain that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gottberg. I appreciate that.
I think that's a very reasonable stance, because I also fall into the category of people that believes that, you know, you have free will and you should be able to make bad decisions. It's an, I favor this, because of all the things I smoked in my life, this was not one of them, and so, you know, I don't really have that problem. It's, there's a little too much evidence about the marketing to kids. There's a little too much of this going on out there. It was a shock to the system to see, I don't know how many, just pop up all of a sudden. They were like mushrooms in town. I want to know more about what we can do to sort of blunt the progress of this, and I think, honestly, you know, we tied ourselves up in knots on cannabis about what they could and couldn't do. I mean, if you drive by those places, you wouldn't know what, I mean, honestly, except for like the little symbols, you wouldn't know what they were selling in those buildings. And yet, a product that is, I would argue, far more dangerous and has far greater health impacts and certainly costs our society more money, as on a whole, you can put anything you want out there, you know? And if anything, I'd like to start seeing ordinances where we just start to put the kibosh on that, even if they're still in those storefronts, you know, the neon signs, all of that, just sort of, you know, if you want to go and buy vape, God bless you, go do it. I think it's a bad idea, but go do it. But if we're going to do that to cannabis, we ought to at least be doing it to tobacco as well. And so, I'm kind of curious to just kind of stop the progress of it and then to come back with some sane and sensible restrictions and stuff that we can start putting on the retail side of it. You can't ask this question, because I think it's illegal. It would be nice to know how much, when you said the economic impacts, I'm assuming it's taxes?
Yeah, I mean, I would say sales tax.
Sales tax, yes, so, but let's just talk about that. We can't ask that, like specifically, but we'd be kind of curious to know, sort of in the aggregate, what this product generates in any given year. Is it a lot, a little? Not that that should drive our decision, because we're talking about health issues, but, you know, we also have a budget to balance, and we have things to think about. Dave?
To answer your question, I don't know.
You don't know?
Because you have retailers that sell multiple items, different types of items, including tobacco.
Right.
So, we would have to carve out what that would mean in dollars.
And that's probably not kosher. Can we even know that? Not individually, no. We cannot know individually, but even in the aggregate.
Dave, let me ask you a question this way. If we were to narrow it down just to those that are only tobacco shops, primarily all they sell...
Yeah.
It would depend on whether or not there's enough of those that we could list on an average per shop. We could maybe do that.
Oh, there's at least five dedicated.
Because they sell paraphernalia as well.
Yeah.
Typically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You would have to carve that out.
Right.
I guess, Dave, one way to ask that question is, would they ever be in our top 25? I know we do list those out individually. Are they...
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any other...
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, and I told Pierre earlier today, I said, I don't want to be the donut hole in the donut. I mean, even though I love donut holes, but I really don't want to be the donut hole left out in the entire Western Slope.
Well, there is that.
And to the supervisor's point, you know, where we become the magnet, because now we're the only game in town where you could have access to have these types of businesses, and I'm a free-market guy, but I also don't want, we also don't need to be the mecca of smoke shops in, you know, in Eldorado County and the city of Placerville. And I think John makes a great point, you know, to be consistent. I mean, we did a lot of work when it came to cannabis and how it looks, where it can be, how it can be sold, all those things. And I think just as a statewide policy as well, we've, you know, we've really taken on that as a state to really clamp down on how we do it. Voters passed Prop 63 by over 60%, so, including our county, so a large population of our residents have said, yes, they do want to have these higher taxes on tobacco products, which will lead to more regulation on these tobacco products based on the initiative. So, I don't think we're being out of step necessarily with our residents as well, even though there was a chunk that said no to the tax part of that as well. I do think I'd like to see what the, I'd like to see more data on what the county passed in terms of what that looks like, so that we do see the onerous or not onerous parts that to potential people coming into our city, such as, like, let's just say, for instance, we didn't have a riot aid, and a riot aid wanted to come in, and they sold, you know, tobacco as part of that, would that limit a riot aid from coming into our city? And so, and they might just say, well, it's only 2% of our sales, so we're not going to sell it. But I just want to make that point, that there's things like that that aren't just tobacco shops, so I want to make sure that those, you know, that we're looking at all those things holistically as well. I will be supporting this today if we decide to go forward, but just wanted to make those comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm pretty much in the camp of protecting our youth. I can respect the idea that we want to let people do what they want, but our youth, these are long-term effects. Addiction is a real thing. Targeting our youth, you know, has been proven by these companies. I just feel that, you know, for our overall public health, that this is a good thing. I can't, I can list all the bad things. I can't even list one good thing that comes from tobacco for people. But I think everybody knows where I stand with that. You know, in terms of decisions the government makes for our health, I think they make a lot of decisions, and we want them to do a lot of things for health in different avenues. So, I mean, we could have that debate, but what is the council's will? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to... Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance. I think Pierre had a, with Pierre's comments in there.
Yeah, there was that one.
And we adopt the emergency ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg? Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No.
Aye. Thank you. Appreciate the council giving us that 45 days more to consider this. And with that, we will move on to public hearings, which there are none. And next is discussion action items. 12.1, acknowledge and file the fiscal year 2324 mid-year budget report as presented. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor No, members of the council. So, tonight's report, the intention is to answer two primary questions. How is the local economy doing, and is the city living within its means? So, we'll take it, we'll review the local economic indicators and evaluate your general fund and all operating funds to answer that question. So, jumping right into unemployment rates. Interestingly enough, the economy is softening, but statewide unemployment rates have remained relatively low over the last 12 months or through December. They've... they've decreased about 0.4 to 0.5 percentage points. The city's rate, although, has been lower when you compare it to the state, which is 5.1% as of December, 4.1, 4.4 in Eldorado County and 4.7 in Sacramento Metropolitan Service Area. And then historically, you can see that the city's rates there, you can see during the pandemic, it spiked up to 12%. We've come a long way and we remain at 3.6% or slightly above the pre-pandemic level. Looking at residential real estate, this is an area that has softened. Over the last previous calendar year, our volume actually decreased by about 78 units. So it went from 264, which was kind of the peak, down to 186. The pre-pandemic level was about 289 units. So it's about a 29% decrease there. Looking at average prices for residential real estate, the good news is those actually increased, five out of 12 months, actually increased year over year. And at the end of the year, the average was $600,111 as compared to $536,174. This is a new slide. This is your California Consumer Price Index. The reason I'm showing you this, there's been a lot of discussion about inflation, and that directly affects our budget. So a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. And you can see that in 2022, we had significant inflation as high as eight, a little over 8% year over year in June of 2020, 2022. But that did decrease, or not, it didn't decrease, but it's shrunk down to 3.48% as of December. So it's more what you typically see year over year per month in inflation. So that's good news for our budget when we buy goods and services. Now I'll hand it over to interim Director Yule to talk about recreation program attendance.
Thank you, David. Recreation program attendance is trending in the right direction. Our Gold Bug Park continues to thrive. Our numbers are very consistent from year to year due to the fact that most of our tours are all booked. Our aquatics program continues to be extremely popular. There is one decrease there for the waiting pool, and that's just through programming different types of activities throughout the season. Our special interest classes are coming back from, from COVID. Right now, there's really a trend for yoga, dance, and dog training. Those are the ones that are really doing well for us. On the adult sports side of things, we got three-on-three basketball back up and running. That's really encouraging. Our softball teams are staying pretty flat. There seems to be just a regional decline to a certain extent in, in softball throughout Northern California, anyway. And our youth basketball programs definitely coming back from COVID. Our, our numbers keep consistently increasing each year. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dave.
Thank you, Steve. Now I'll hand it over to Director Rivas to talk about building division revenues.
Thank you very much, Dave. So looking at the building division revenues, we show actual from beginning at fiscal year 2015, 2016, through to 2022, 2023. And you can see it's, it's fairly constant, but we see, if you look at the projection for 2023, 2024, it jumps quite high, and that's due to some larger projects. For example, the Mallard and Middletown apartments are, you know, very, very high-end value. So since our construction permits are based on valuation, it really boasts our revenues in that case. So again, I think we're looking fairly good. We do have some large projects coming through. We have Cottonwood 4 and 6, of course. It's adding a lot of single-family residential construction, which is also helping. Go to the next slide. So this slide is issued building permits, and it just shows an overall trend that we're trending upward. So we like to see that our construction activity continues to grow within the city. So we're becoming a very attractive place to be and grow. Next slide, please. Building valuations. So again, I think overall, it sort of trends upward. You can see some spikes in there, and those are due, again, to larger projects then that really can boast the valuation because the construction are, have a much higher value. We see that 2023, 2024, at the very end there, again, projected is quite high, and that's due to the Mallard and Middletown apartments. Next slide, please. Planning and zoning. So this would be your condition of use permits, variances, rezoning, that, that sort of thing. We've gotten busier over the last few years. You can see in this, we've had some slumps there in the past, but it's nice to see sort of a trend upward with our discretionary applications. And again, you could look at the footnotes there, it sort of explains why we have some of those pretty strong variations in, in the amount of revenues coming in. And then the next slide. This is, uh, single-family dwellings that are being built. So you can see in the past, 2015, 2016, and 2016, 2017, I think that was due to, we had the, the winesap development. That was part of the Ridge of Orchard Hill. And I think we had some escatons in there as well, of course. So we had a lot of units. And then it remained a little bit flat, but we're projecting at least 15 during the 2023, 2024. That'll probably go up. A lot of that is due to the Cottonwood Phase 4 and 6 development. And we'll look at impact fees. Impact fees tend to vary wildly. And again, it just depends upon the number of units then that are subject to our water CIC fee and our sewer CIC fee. Again, we can see, we don't really see in that last fiscal year, 2023, 2024, when you compare that with the water and compare that with the sewer. That's because the Mallard and Middletown are EID, and so the city isn't receiving any, any water CIC for those very large projects. It's, you know, 72 units and then 82 units add those up, and it's quite a bit. And then you see the projected for sewer is quite a bit. That's because the city will provide sewer service to both those projects. And then the traffic impact mitigation fee and the park impact mitigation fee, the same situation we have here. The traffic is based on a per-unit basis, fairly flat until we get to the Mallard-Middletown apartments, which will pay a, quite a significant amount of traffic impact mitigation fees due to the number of units being constructed. And then with the park, it'll be a nice boost to the park impact fees there because, again, of Mallard and Middletown. And then I think that concludes my slides. Happy to answer your questions if the council has any.
Thank you, Pierre.
Thank you.
Moving on to encroachment permits, I'll hand it over to interim director, city engineer, McConnell.
Thanks, Dave. Encroachment permits, pretty much since the significant jump in 2020, which was due to the on-street dining encroachment permits, things have leveled out to the 250 to 300 range, which is an increase from prior years, mostly due to vegetation management and PG&E permit increases. And we will continue to see that same trend this year. Next slide. Transportation permits, this is a little bit more unpredictable, kind of bounce around, but depends sometimes on construction and if there's a lot more transportation moving through town. It's, uh, pretty much staying the same. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Moving on to your Bradley Burn sales tax, is your general fund sales tax, represents one percentage point of the 8.25%. It is your most significant economic indicator, and it currently represents 58.18% of your general fund revenues. We continue to have strong per capita sales tax, $633 per person in 2022. We anticipate getting our new numbers for 2023 next, later this month. And Placerville was ranked number 37 out of 539 agencies, and we hope to be number one someday. The quarter ended September. You've seen these numbers before in your last meeting. On the cash basis, it was up by $5,867, a 0.4%. And then when you take out the back taxes that was included in that return, it actually ended up being about 15, a little over $15,000, 0.9% decrease. But after four straight quarters of significant decreases, it was nice to see kind of a leveling out of our sales tax. We did perform better than the state, which came in at 1.7% for the third quarter negative. And then looking at your contributors, you can see that the state pool now represents almost a quarter of our total sales tax, which is online sales tax. Autos and transportation, 25.05%. Building and construction, 16.97%. And you can see the others there. And that's important when you consider the next slide, which shows the growth by category. You can see that autos and transportation with higher interest rates experienced a 4.4% decrease. Building construction, similar, 1.46%. Business and industry, 0.31% decrease. And then winners all the way across from there, up till state and county pool, negative 0.72%. And then you can see the growth over the last five, six years there. You can see that pretty significant decreases over the previous four quarters, and then the kind of flattening in the third quarter of 2023. And then we appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25 generators that are listed here. List has stayed about the same. And looking at your Bradley Burn sales tax totals, so for 2223, sales tax totaled $6,388,000. We forecast for this fiscal year, 2324, 634, excuse me, $6,344,000, slightly below $43,383, 0.68%, essentially flat. And historically, since 1314, you can see that sales tax has grown nicely, kind of flattened out. When you look at 2324 in the red, that's cash, what we anticipate receiving. The blue is discounted by annual inflation, and then the green is cumulative inflation since 1314. So you can see that at the cumulative since 1314, we're actually at the 1617 level when you consider inflation. All right, just as an overview, you adopted your budget in June of '23. It totaled $25,410,000. Of that amount, general fund was $12,598. It did include a planned $1.1 million deficit or one-time use of fund balance for equipment, projects, and additional pension liability payment. And just as a recap, the previous three years, we, we actually accumulated over $3 million in fund balance. So we were trying to use that for one-time purposes, which is a good thing. And it did include a $100,000 contingency for unforeseen expenditures. Since that time, excuse me, you approved an additional $5,000 for park and trash receptacles and $50,000 for historic City Hall renovation stabilization project. In looking at your budget, just how it's broken out, you can see that per dollar, this is a general fund dollar, the police department, 32 cents, community services, 25, non-departmental, things like audit, debt service, those kind of things, 15 cents. Administration, 7 cents, public works, 7, development services, 7, a lot of sevens. Finance, 4, engineering, 3, and the city council, 1. So you remain very affordable. When you look at your budget comparatively, revenues versus expenditures, this just kind of compares what it looks like. You can see the sales tax represents, if you took both community services and police, it's, it basically equals your sales tax a little bit less. And then here, you can see revenues over expenditures, how we built up our fund balance. In 2021, we had a $760,000 surplus, $1.7 million in '21, '22, and then in 2023, about 1.2 million. So using that for other projects, paying down our pension liability and equipment. And here we have your revised budget, general fund budget. You can see revenues, budget 11.4 million, forecast 11.3, down about 192,000, 1.67%. Expenditures, 12.1 budget, forecast 11.9 or $264,000 lower at 2.17. Transfers out are up slightly by 233,000, and that's primarily due to, you have the transfer in, out to Measure J went up about 100,000. Transfer in from gas tax decreased by about $16,000. And we also had about, we're estimating about $92,000, actually, excuse me, $97,000 in general liability claim costs by the end of the fiscal year. So that's all wrapped up in there. So your deficit goes from 1.1 million to 1.3 million, and it's because of that, those additional transfers, as well as a little bad luck. So. Looking at your revenues, we talked about sales tax. When you look at budget versus forecast, down by about 341,000. That did include, we did forecast in there, the Rite Aid closure as well as pending OfficeMax closure. And there's some other things in there, can't be that specific, but overall, about 5.1% down. All of the taxes, that's your property tax, business license, TOT tax, your franchise fees, cannabis tax, transfer tax for real estate. That actually is slightly below about $24,000 or 1.56%. Primarily TOT and business license are down, all the others are up. Construction permits, Mr. Rivas covered this, up by about $81,000 or 28%. Intergovernmental revenue is your property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. That's up by 54,000 or 4.4.8%. Charges for services is anything from parks and recreation fees to planning and building, engineering fees, slightly higher, $91,000. Fines and forfeitures, 13. Use of money property, small amount, decrease 4 point, or increase $4,300. Other financing sources, $20,000. So a total below $192,000, 1.6%, 7%. Expenditures, you can see it by department. Most of the variances are due to, for example, police, drilled down on that a little bit more. It's primarily due to insurance changes. People, we budgeted single, they ended up getting married and having a family, or they just decided to go from in lieu to doing insurance, those kind of things. Development services, we had a couple vacancies there, mid-year savings there. Engineering, same thing. Community services, we had some savings there due to vacancies and other things. Public works, had some overages there. Again, primarily, I believe, health insurance was the driver there. City council, $16,000 savings, good job. City administration, $21,000. Finance, 66 due to a vacancy or two. And non-departmental is primarily due to transfers, the $294,000 increase, due to lower sales tax of Measure J, lower gas tax coming into the general fund, and our transfers out for general liability claims. So overall, it's down by about $30,000, 0.24%. Just as a reminder, this does not include pay-as-you-go costs for Gatsby 75. We do, it is pay-as-you-go. We don't reserve anything for Gatsby 75 in the future. It assumes expending the entire $100,000 contingency and the $161,000 increase and forecasted deficit. I've got listed there the general liability. It's primarily revenue being less, but it, we also had the general liability claims and the $119,000 transfer from Measure J, which also contributed to that. Any questions so far? All right, moving on to water. So there's a big goose egg on the revenue side. The reason for that is, is our forecast for connection fees. We have some pretty large construction projects going on. Our estimate was off a bit, and so I'd have more good news on sewer, but for water, that revenue came in less. So it's about 24% or $815. Expenditures, slightly higher, $25,356. Transfers out, same. So we end up instead of 816, $816,000 surplus, we have a $24,000 deficit. That fund has a fairly healthy fund balance, so I don't anticipate a problem. We budgeted $200,000 in CIP projects coming from that fund. So that'll come from fund balance instead of the, the CIC connections. Sewer, this is the silver lining. So our connection fees were actually estimated lower than expected, and so we anticipate $592,000 total. than expected, and so we anticipate $592,000 total revenue higher than budget. And on that, it included $672,000 in additional connection charges. Expenditures coming in about $308,000 less, and that's due to vacancies. So instead of a million-dollar surplus for projects, you'll have 1.9 million for projects if our estimates come in. Non-major funds, just a couple comments on this. The downtown parking fund is the only concern I have at this point. Lease parking's doing well, it's actually higher by $19,000 than budget. Daily parking and citations are down. So Mr. Morris and I are looking at that, but that's, that fund, we anticipate coming in at about a $37,000 deficit. So it does have fund balance to cover that, but we'll need to watch that closely. All the other non-major funds, no comments unless you have any questions. And then your total budget, you can see that revenues, revised budget, $29,765,000, forecast $29,42,000 or 722,000 less, primarily due to water, general fund, and those other funds that had deficits, or 2.43%. Expenditures came in slightly lower, 464,000 or 1.81%. So before capital investments, your fund balance is forecasted to be 3.9 instead of 4.1, slightly, slightly lower overall. And then closing comments, although the local economy shows signs of cooling, active development, and CIP projects, we have some pretty large CIP projects coming up. The Broadway maintenance project and a few others. Broadway sidewalks will help stimulate commerce over the next year. The city council and management continue to operate the city in a prudent and responsible manner. We anticipate year-end operating revenues to exceed operating expenditures for most funds, not all, but most, and staff will provide another update to the city council at your May 9 budget workshop. That'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. I always appreciate those easy-to-understand presentations. Questions from the council? No, not at this time? Okay, we'll open this to public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back to the council for discussion. Michael, you look like you were going to say something.
Yeah, Dave, any sense of, I mean, I know, it was a parity minor, how much was the, how much did we anticipate our decrease being with the Office Max and Rite Aid going away? What was that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Mr. Morris asked the same question, and the total for that, I didn't commit it to memory, but.
I've got it here, Dave.
It's pretty much, typically, we try not to divulge this, but it's kind of, they're going past, so I don't think it'll hurt. But I'll say for both, for both Bradley Burns and your add-on taxes, about $84,000 a year.
Got you. Thank you.
You have some new businesses coming into town, I won't name them, ones on Broadway, that should offset most of that.
Okay, are there other questions, comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, since this is acknowledged and filed, do we need to take action? All right, we acknowledge and we file it.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, we will move on to 12.2, consider use of a professional recruitment firm to recruit for the position of community services director, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, I've mentioned earlier that in a previous meeting, Mr. Terry Zeller left the city or announced his resignation on February 12th, and last week, March 8th, was his last day with the city. We appreciate what he did for us and helping us, and we now have brought on interim, Steve Yule, to assist us until we can bring on a permanent person for that position. As we look at how to do these recruitments, one of the options is to consider a professional recruiter. And they, from my experience, they do a great job most of the time, and can assist. Primarily, what I see, the primary advantage to them is being able to find those candidates that may not, we may not be able to find under our normal recruitment techniques that we have. So that's kind of the main factor in that, of whether or not you consider someone. I've noted in here, we've talked to two firms, it's not cheap, as you can see. One of those firms, if we decided to go forward, is RGS, and their initial con, this was just a preliminary proposal they gave me, they've given me a contract now, a draft contract for $18,000, so within that range that they gave us. That does not include their direct expenses, so if they have to travel, hotel costs, et cetera, which they don't anticipate there would be a lot of that, if any, but they would also charge us for the direct cost of advertising. So if they advertise with a certain organization, for example, for this one, probably CPRS, California Parks and Recreation Society, if there's a cost there, that cost would be included. So there are some additional costs, I tried to get a number out of them, and they wouldn't give me one. But anyway, I don't think it'd be a lot. I would guess maybe $1,000 or maybe a little $1,500 in addition to the $18,000 if they were to, if they were to do that. The other firm is all-inclusive, Pecama McKenney. I have not got an updated proposal from them, this was a previous proposal, but I don't think it will be less than this amount of the $27,000 that they proposed. We also contacted Bob Murray and Associates, another local Sacramento area firm. They were too busy and declined to respond to our request. So I wanted to present this to you as an option. If you look at the information that I've provided, I also provided a recommendation. I want to pull back a little bit, obviously, it's your decision. I'm not strongly recommending this. I do believe that for this position, there are options, there are, I mentioned California Parks and Recreation Society, which those that would be interested normally are very active in that, in that group. And I do believe that if it's the desire of the council, that we can do this recruitment in-house rather than contracted out. But I am open to getting some help if you desire to go that direction. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Cleve.
Thank you, Cleve. I know, I was, I think Mark Acuna and I were on the interview panel when we hired Terry. Was that through, also through a recruiter, or was that something we did internally?
We did that internally.
Internally, okay. I mean, I, I mean, part of me, I will say that this price, only because I have a friend that does this exact same work, but out of Southern California, and I would say her, and for the ones that I saw, she was recruiting for larger positions for the state of California, but between $40,000 to $60,000 per position that they were charging in the state of California. So I do think this $19,000 or so is probably within, within range, unfortunately. But I think, I mean, for myself, my first thought is, you know, we got to go, we got some good candidates first time around when we did this, and we could see how we do ourselves, and if we don't get a good response, you know, come back and re-look at this. I hate to spend this $20,000 if we can get somebody good just by our own efforts, but my comments now.
Thank you.
I guess similar question on that is sort of, last time when we did this, and how sort of, how long was that process? How long did it take for us to find a candidate?
It was, it was a normal recruitment. I think we left it open for a minimum of 30, probably closer to 45 days that we left it open. And then the interview process, we used, if you all remember, a fairly extensive interview process. We actually had three interview panels, if I recall right. We had a technical panel, we had a public panel, and then we had a, I think I called it a city employee slash council panel. So we had three different panels that we had them do, and they also had a written exercise that they did, written exercise, and then a presentation to the public panel that they did. So it was a fairly extensive and rigorous process that we followed. I think it, I think it went well, I think it gave a broad range of input on, from people that, you know, what they would like to see. And the, I believe, as I recall, the selection process and what was recommended by the panels was fairly consistent in the person that they felt would, would work best. And so I think we would follow maybe not that exact process, but something, something similar, and I liked the idea of a new department head going through some, some pressure situations and see how they deal with that. So I think it went, I think it was a good, good process, so.
Thank you. Did you have anything, Vice Mayor? Okay, we will open this to public comment.
Sue Rodman again. I think that we should at least try in-house as our first option. We did well with this the last time. I think we can take some advice from people who know who to contact and go ahead and do it in-house. I don't see any reason to spend somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 if we don't need to. I mean, our budget shows that we're already running a little tight, so I would say, let's, let's not splurge on this one. Let's do it in-house.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring this back. I'm of that like mind to kind of save the money for now. Luckily, because we have Director Yule, we don't, it doesn't feel like a hurry-up and we got to find somebody right away, and we can go through the process we went through last time, we can reach out to the California Park and Rec Society, which seems like a fairly big organization, and if we don't have the results we need, we can always move forward later. But I, I feel the same in that we really need to be watching our budget this year, and there are no more ARPA funds, and we're going to have to really watch what we do.
Yeah, I also agree with that. I think we should try, try in-house first, and if that's not successful, we always can come back to this. But I would do that before going to a recruiter. And, you know, also, my experience with recruiters is that they aren't always successful, so, you know, we should see what we can do on our own.
Great, do we have a motion then?
Can I make just one more comment?
Yes.
Mayor, just want to mention, budget-wise, some of these places to advertise may be a little bit more than what we anticipated in our budget, so you don't need to do anything tonight, I don't think, but we can, we can work on that. We did adjust our budget in the mid-year to try to reflect that, but depending on what those costs are, we may, we may go over a little bit budget on our, in our recruitment budget that we have, so just so you know.
Thank you. I think that's all right.
I think we could, we can move option number three, do not approve a contract at this time and direct staff to perform the recruitment in-house.
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Great, okay, at this time, we're going to move to 12.4, consider approving a 4.65, $4.65 per game increase in the adult softball team registration fee for the 10-week season for a total fee of $734 per team effective April 1, 2024, approving an agreement with Folsom Official Association to provide officials for adult softball games and authorize Director of Community Services to execute the same. Mr. Yule?
Before we get going, we might want to tell the two people that are probably here for 12.3 why we skipped it. Two seconds.
Okay, for those who weren't here at the beginning, we push this to the end in order to hopefully be able to get both the consultants by phone to answer questions.
And one of them was in transit.
Yes, okay. With that, we will go back to 12.4, Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, the purpose of this recommendation is to recover increased personnel costs associated with the city of Placerville's adult softball program and establish a new TC2 season format. On January 1, 2024, California minimum wage increased by 50 cents to $16 per hour. In addition, the city contracted officials association has requested a per-game rate increase from $33 per game to 40. These increases in personnel costs will have a negative financial impact on the program unless participant fees are increased. With assistance from the City of Placerville Recreation and Parks Commission, it was determined that due to field conditions at Lions Park, it is advantageous to expand the number of games played over two seasons as opposed to three shorter seasons. In conclusion, staff is requesting the council approve a $4.65 per game increase in the adult softball team registration fee for each 10-week season for a total fee of $734 per team effective April 1, 2024, and approve an agreement with the Folsom Officials Association to provide officials for the city's adult softball program and authorize the Director of Community Services to execute the same. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll, oh, oh, sorry, did you have one, Michael?
Just, just for clarity and for the public, now, I mean, these charges were basically on minimum wage increases as well, what we're looking at here today, Steve?
Sure.
Thank you, I just wanted to highlight that, that they're not, we're not just raising them to raise them, but we're, we're keeping pace with.
They've been raised every year as minimum wage has gone up.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we will open this to the public.
Will any of this help the condition of our softball fields, or is it strictly wages?
Softball field fees cover their umpires, their scorekeepers, and the prep of the field, dragging the dirt and putting the lines down. That is all that these costs cover.
Okay, so are getting our softball fields back into shape?
That would have to be a CIP project. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do we have a roll call?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Member Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Okay, we'll move to the next item. Consider approving one or more council members and/or staff to attend the Eldorado County Chamber Study Mission 2024 to Columbus, Ohio. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, two years ago, actually, I attended this to St. Louis, Missouri, and last year, Vice Mayor No attended the study mission to Austin, Texas. The chamber has planned their, their study mission for this year to Columbus, Ohio, and has requested that the consider, the city consider attending, sending someone on the study mission. From my experience, I thought it was a good program. I will state that there were some parts of it that I did not feel applied to the city of Placerville, definitely. In the city of St. Louis, they're a little bit larger than us. But we went to a smaller city outside that was somewhat comparable, I think, in some ways, they, you know, did a lot of beer gardens and wine tasting areas that they had, just outside the cities, very similar to maybe what we have here. And I thought that was more applicable than what we looked at in, in the city of St. Louis. So I think there were some things that gave us some ideas and et cetera, and I can let Mayor No speak to her trip that she had last year to Austin, Texas, right?
Austin, Texas, yes.
Or mayor?
In the middle of summer.
Yeah, in the middle of the summer, so.
No, no, definitely there was value in that trip. You look at a big city, you look at a small city, and they kind of, you know, walk everybody through and kind of discuss what's possible here in our region, and the partnerships and all that. I do want everyone to know that one of our peak members, Patty Borelli, is attending this trip, so there is someone from, from the city area going. I'm just going to be fiscally conservative with most of my recommendations and not knowing what our entire budget looks like. I don't know that this is something we absolutely do, need to do unless someone has that overwhelming, burning desire to go to Columbus, Ohio in the middle of July. But like I said, we are going to have someone from our peak attend that, and just wanted everyone to know that as we move forward with this discussion.
So just quickly, just so you know, the, the cost for this is estimated to be 3,500, it was 3,200 last year, just normal inflation, I guess, if they expect, they don't have the final brochure out for the trip, but they're expecting around 3,500. final brochure out for the trip, but they're expecting around $3,500 for it. You did actually budget for this in your budget last year, so it is included, so it doesn't require any additional action budget-wise if you choose to send someone on this trip. So...
Thank you.
...answer any questions.
Great. Do we have any questions?
No, I was just going to comment. So as a part of Secog this year, we're doing a trip to Denver, Colorado, sort of a similar-sized metropolis to our six-county region. And so, you know, it kind of does the same thing where you're looking at best practices in smaller, you know, smaller cities, and then the larger city, you know, being with Sacramento. So I think from that sense, we're kind of covered as well. Like, so, you know, I'll be going on that one because I'm chairing this year. So I haven't done a lot of the trips because it's been a cost. I'm covering the cost myself anyways. But, and that was only $300, actually. We've gotten the cost down to each of our municipalities. We have some budget that we can cover for some of the stuff for the members, but so it's going to be about $300 bucks per person. So a lot, a lot cheaper. So I agree with the mayor. You know, knowing that Patty's going, I do feel like we're covered from a city perspective. Unless somebody wants to go, I don't want to, you know, step in anyone's way of going. But, you know, if we can save the $3,000, then I'm good with that.
I would just say, logistically, I can't afford to take that many days off work. So it's not something that I could do.
I've spent summers in Indiana as a child, and Ohio is not significantly different. So, yeah, I'll be the devil's advocate here. I do think that sometimes it's to represent, to see and be seen is important, actually. And we talked about this a little bit in our agenda review. But I don't want to go to Ohio at all, actually. And so, I mean, I don't feel like I want to go. You can't go. You're going to go do something. And we all have to have these things covered. And I sometimes wonder about some of the values sometimes because you can see really great things. I went to a study thing in Kansas City on Secog, you know, as part of Secog. And it's good. You see lots of things, new ideas, new things. One of the challenges when you step out of California is that they do have vastly different... They do have different taxing structures in a lot of those places. So when they go to fund these things, a lot of times, they're funding initiatives. They fund them out of sales tax and stuff. Well, with Prop 13, your sales tax is fixed, and plus, we get almost no sales tax in the city. And so you have to be careful when you look at these, how are they funding them and stuff. And sometimes those funding alternatives are simply just not available in California in general. So anyway, I have no burning desire to go to Columbus, Ohio.
I think you meant property tax, not sales tax.
Property tax. Yeah, the property taxes.
I am able to go if that was the will of the council. I just, like I said, Patty's going.
I can go. I could go.
I would go if...
Yes.
I just, like I said, I said, we have a member going, Michael have. I think that we're doing enough outreach, but I just wanted to remain open. Okay, we will open this for public comment.
Ruth Michelson. Since I'm here, I might as well tell you, I'm a Michigander, and I will concur, you do not, in July, want to go to the Midwest. It is hellacious. I used to always go in July because that's when the Ann Arbor Art Fair is, and I can no longer tolerate it. So everything else aside, I would not wish that upon you. It's just that the humidity is about the same as the heat. It's about 90% humidity, 90 degrees. You feel like you get out of the shower and you need another shower.
Thank you, Ruth.
Do we have to do anything, like not authorize it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not a lot of money. I don't think we need to do this. It looks like a junket. I doubt that we're going to have much public support for it.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Anyone else? No? Okay, we'll bring this back to council for discussion and a motion.
I would like to make a comment. Yeah, it's easy to call it a junket. But these things actually can have value. I mean, they do. Usually, they're very well thought out. They do a lot of planning. They do bring you around and show you a lot of things. The question is, do you need to go see the things that they're going to show you? And if we had more money, and, you know, it wasn't an issue. And if there weren't anybody going, that's the other thing, too, is Patty's going, you're going to go do something similar in Denver, I think. We've got our bases covered. I'd move that we don't do this. Is that a thing? Do I have to make?
I'll second that.
Yeah.
That's an option, yeah, to not approve.
Do not approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, passes unanimously. We will move back to 12.3. Consider a contract. Oh, that's right. We were going to take a quick break to see if we can get the people on the phone. All right, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Sorry, Cleve.
Are we going to start doing that?
We're up?
We're up.
Stop right now. Otherwise, you violate the...
Only two of us can have this conversation.
Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to 12.3. Consider a contract for retail... You want to hear me also, huh? All right. Welcome back, everyone. We are on item 12.3. Consider a contract for retail market analysis and business recruitment services and associated budget appropriation. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, this item before you is to assist the city in trying to recruit additional businesses, recognizing some of the recent closures that we've had in our town. The purpose would be to provide retail analysis and business attraction services to assist us in recruiting new businesses. Over the past few months, the city has seen the closure of some major businesses in the city, specifically the two that are most notable probably are the Rite Aid up off of Placerville Drive and the Office Max on Forney Road. In addition, there's some smaller ones. There's a couple on Main Street that you're familiar with, the therapy store that closed a few months ago, and also Supply Sergeant on Main Street. The city reached out to two firms that do this type of business. One is HDL, who the city also uses for our sales tax analysis each year, and they do a great job on that for us. And we also reached out to an additional company called The Retail Coach. Couple of things on those two companies. First of all, HDL, we did use HDL in 2018 to look at some potential recruitment services at that time. In your staff report, you can see there some of the businesses that they identified that would be a good fit and potentially we could try to recruit. And there was, like I say, a first tier and a second tier of potential stores that they identified. At that time, I will note that the primary location we were looking at was what today is known as Apple Farm Place, which has taken a little bit of a different look, a facelift, if you will, since that time. At that time, we were not able to recruit any additional businesses through that process. But again, I emphasize different time, different circumstances with that shopping center and what was going on there at the time. The other thing is that in talking to the two businesses, you'll note there's somewhat of a difference in the cost of the two services. HDL Company says, quoted us $29,500 for a one-year contract, and The Retail Coach has quoted us $40,000 for a one-year contract. One thing to note in talking to HDL Companies yesterday, they informed me that although we had named the four specific properties that we thought we were interested in, they noted that that doesn't restrict them and that they could basically do the entire city for the cost that they have quoted us. The task that they use, and first, I should state that we do have them on the phone line with us, and I'll introduce them in just a second. But the tasks are somewhat similar. They have different processes, but they first go through an analysis and identify what would be a good fit, what our leakage is, what type of shopping that people go out of town to get, and how we might be able to meet that need and reach those businesses. Following that, they go into a next process where they will reach out to the actual businesses and determine and try and recruit them and see if they would be interested in coming into the city, into the different spots we might have. So with that, I'd like to introduce the two companies. I primarily, I didn't plan on them giving a presentation, but if you would like them to, I'm sure they would be happy to. I mainly asked them to be prepared to answer any questions that you might have tonight. So first, from HDL, we have Barry Foster, and I've known Barry since 2018 when we had this program before, and we worked with him a little bit then. And so he is on the line. And then also, from The Retail Coach, we have, oh, no, Charles Porter, right? Parker. Charles Parker. Excuse me, Parker, or Charles. I didn't have that in front of me. But Charles Parker from The Retail Coach, who I've also spoken to over the last about week, a week and a half when I started looking at this. So with that, I will turn it back over to the council. I'm happy to answer any questions, and they're prepared to speak also. Mr. Warren has them and put the microphone on the phone so that we can all hear that when you're ready for that.
Okay, so what would be the easiest structure of this? Would we give you a bunch of questions, or do one question at a time, or?
I think probably give them a bunch of questions. Do all the questions, and then we can turn it over to the two of them, or to, you know, I can try and answer that, too, if they're to me. So I'd go through the questions first, and I think that will be the easiest process to...
Okay. Questions from the council?
Can either of these gentlemen... Okay. Cause and effect. You gather some data, you identify some stuff, and then somehow a business happens in your town. Can you give us examples of places like Placerville that you've worked in where that process was successful, and how that worked? Because I understand data gathering, and I'm not an expert when it comes to businesses and stuff. I'm struggling with how does a bill become a law? You know, how do you get from the data side to the actual, on-the-ground, in-storefront business side? And keep it short. And I don't know. You can decide which one goes first.
Do you want to gather more?
Oh, there's more questions. Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I want, you know, I'd like a specific example or two, if they have them, of a small rural town like we have, and the successes they have, and quantify that. What businesses did you bring in? What are you considering successful? Well, you asked for the process.
Okay.
Okay, I want the data.
Those are kind of related.
Well, they are kind of related. And specifically to HDL, they do a fantastic job with our sales tax and other work they do for us. However, six years ago, we hired them and we didn't get any results, so I want to know what would be different and why I would hire them again.
I have comments, but probably they're just comments. I'm going to hold those until later.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
So good for now?
Unless you want me to ask the audience? Or any questions?
Your preference.
Okay. If we have any specific questions from public comment, I will give you another opportunity to make comments afterwards. But if you have specific questions you'd like to ask, please step up to the podium so we can get all the questions answered at once.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking at the proposal from Retail Coach because it seemed as though you were leaning in that direction in the staff report. And one of their early... Here's a question, an early bullet point. Act is an extension of city staff to provide coaching for retail economic development initiatives. I'd like to know about what they're talking about with economic develop initiatives. I think it's a good idea, but what I'm imagining might not be what they're imagining. So that was a question. And then my other question going down there, proposal was when they say what they'll actually do, which kind of responds a little bit to what Mr. Clarici, City Councilmember Clarici was asking. They talk about all these series of emails that they're going to send out. I can't really quite find it in this moment, but there was like eight points of emails. You know, really? I mean, it's just that a lot of people don't even open their emails. I mean, are they going to be more proactive? Are they going to make calls? Are they going to make visits, et cetera? And I also want to know, my third question would be, I really see a huge difference between your big-box stores and what you have downtown. Yes, you have a couple of very large, square-footed stores downtown, 2,500 square feet and 3,000 square feet. Therapy Store is 2,500, Supply Sergeant is 3,000. But really, to me, a very different approach to those areas outside of downtown Placerville. I want to hear if they likewise are thinking of different approaches for the other two big-box stores versus the big stores in Placerville. And there's other openings in Placerville, Hayday and the Santa Tex Cleaners as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I remember when therapy stores first came in, and there was a lot of pushback because they were considered a chain store. Are these people going to look at something other than chain stores? Or are they... Because all of the ones that from six years ago looked like they were all chain stores. And in Placerville, those were not well-received, and none of them succeeded in coming here anyway. So why should we do this again?
Thank you. Tony, do you have any questions? Okay, great. I will open it to comments later. We will hand this over to Cleve for the Q and A.
All right, let's do this. I think we'll have each one answer each question individually.
Really? Okay. Main Street is different. We'll just stipulate, Main Street is different. The rest of the town is not. And my guess is that the folks that are really worried about chains on Main don't give a rip about Broadway and/or Placerville Drive in terms of chain stores. So if, like, for example, we're going to get a Harbor Freight, which there's like one on every corner, and no one has come into this room and said they have opposed to that. We need to understand that, and that's a reasonable comment. I'm not saying it's not a good comment. But we have a lot of commercial outside of Main Street that we need to think about. And really, my thing is, this is probably more focused on all of that. And not so much... Main Street, we can talk about Main Street at some point during this discussion. But I want the folks on the phone to understand that this is a great, big, beautiful city that has, you know, we're going to have some big stores that's all of a sudden empty when Office Max and Rite Aid... I always get them mixed. Rite Aid goes out. Rite Aid used to be a Safeway at one point in the past, and Office Max was always Office Max. I think they were in there when the center was built. My understanding is Office Max is not there anymore because they jacked the rents up. And I don't know, well, Rite Aid was going out of business, so they had a different... They have huge issues, corporate and everything else. Those are big spaces. Those could entertain all sorts of different kinds of businesses. So I think when we're talking to the folks on the phone, they need to understand there's not some ethic about chain stores except for a two-block piece of earth between Sacramento Street and right about where we're sitting right now, just the side of Cedar Ravine. Otherwise, all bets are off. That's my humble opinion.
Okay, good. So just before I turn it over to them, I want to state that I did discuss this issue with both of these people. So they're prepared to talk about that. And the fact that although we don't strictly prohibit franchise businesses in our downtown area, we recognize, and my comment to them is that we do not allow franchise businesses in our downtown area, even though technically they could come in. So they will be prepared to talk about that issue. I'm going to start, Barry Foster from HDL. I'll start with you. And I'm going to combine the first two questions kind of together. Similar agencies in size and makeup, if you will, rural jurisdictions, and maybe successes that you had with that type of jurisdiction. So if you can give us, you know, those first, we'll use that as question number one. Does that meet your question? Okay. So Barry, if you want to answer that one first?
Sure. It was a little bit difficult hearing. I'm trying to watch it on TV, and...
It's a little bit difficult hearing, I'm trying to watch it on TV and I'm also getting a little bit delayed. But I think probably the best correlation that I would use would be to say that we're currently working for them. Been working for them for about four years and it's the city of Ridgecrest. And so it's very, its population is a little over 25,000, but it is out in the middle of really nowhere in Kern County. And but since the time we've been there, we've had quite a bit of success and it doesn't happen overnight. But we've been able to bring Ross Dress for Last and Five Below are going into a vacant building that was previously Staples. And those that they're just getting, they're actually doing tenant improvements right now, they're going to reopen soon. We also brought the first fast casual restaurant to Ridgecrest with the Panda Express. That opened and it was the highest grossing opening Panda Express has ever had out of over 2,500 stores. And so again, we tried to paint that picture and tell that story about why a potential retailer or restaurant is a good fit with that community. And so those market analytics and having all that is really important to have. But a huge opening there and still did very, very well. Also, some other restaurants that we've been bringing to Ridgecrest include Wendy's, Arby's, Chipotle, Starbucks, and then we also brought in Harbor Freight Tools. So again, a lot of success here. It wasn't easy, but we were able to paint that picture and tell that story about they were good fits. And the city is very pleased with what we've been able to do there. So I think that's probably the best correlation to a client that we have. Altogether, we've done work for probably 20 different cities, 25 different cities over the years. We've been able to get 16 or 65 placements. Sometimes we, we had a, in a couple cases, we had vacant K-marts and it spooks up into a number of uses. But we've been able to bring in 65 placements and it's generated, generates about a little over 10 and a half million sales tax for those communities. And so it's not something that comes easy, but you know, we've got a really good track record and would love to have the opportunity here.
I have a follow up? Okay, so you mentioned that there was a wall, a vacant Walmart that got split up. How did that, how did, how did you? Okay, so I'm assuming you generated the thing and whatever businesses went into the split up Walmart. But then, do you also work then with the developer, or not the developer, but the property owner? And then do you work with the property owner and say, hey, we've got five businesses that we can put in a Walmart if you just throw up some tenant improvements, blah, 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 whatever that is? How does that work?
Absolutely. That's critical. So again, I think you've got to understand that they don't control those properties. And so there is an owner and they usually have a broker too that represent them. So they, you've got to, you've got to work with them. And I think that that previous property that we looked at trying to put something in, which has got a different kind of use, redevelopment use now in Placerville, that property owner was somewhat challenging to deal with at that time. And it was a challenging site. And so, but you've got to work proactively with, with property owners and their brokers.
All right, Charles, you want to answer those, that question?
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks for having me on.
Hold on just one minute, Charles, if I could.
For comparison purposes, the best one we have is probably a town a little bit even smaller than all of you is Lakeport. You know, rural community, very much dependent on tourism in that case, but you know, population of 5,000. Although we look more at a trade area population. So we use mobile location data. We study where consumers are coming from and come up with what is the actual trade area that we pitch more so than just the community population. So for Placerville, some of our preliminary analysis, we wouldn't just look at the, you know, 11, 12,000 people that live, you know, right around Cleveland proper, but our models are showing it's, you know, 60, 65,000 of the overall trade area. But so the closest one to kind of the rural community we'd look at would be Lakeport, where we've got a Marshals and a Tractor Supply going in right now in a former Kmart building, where we were very actively involved, working with their developer and those brokers. And we're actually attending ICSC Monterey to figure out who we want to choose to be the third one to go in there. We have three or four options. Some tenants play better with others than others do, but we roll up our sleeves and work very much hand in hand with those property owners and, and those brokers that they work with. And we've been doing this for 25 years across 41 states and over 600 communities to help put these deals together and work with a number of, of communities across the country in the 10,000 population range to look at putting those deals together. So that's what we would focus on, to make sure that we, we bring those parties together, really serve as an extension of the city for, for that case. And one number that we're very proud of is we've got a 90% retention rate with our clients choosing to do additional assignments with us. I know right now we have about 12 projects active across the state of California. And if there's any feedback, I apologize, I'm sitting in DFW Airport after just flying home from, from Palm Desert where I was this week, working with site meetings with selectors as well. So, you know, we plan to be in your community, try to be as in tune with those property owners. I know we've got three or four, you know, main properties vacancies we'd be looking to fill up, but also be looking at new development opportunities and making sure that, you know, back to your question about economic development initiatives, you know, what's overall going to bring in new businesses to town? And that would be our main focus.
So just, just quickly, one, one follow up to that question for both of you. So Barry, you, you mentioned Ridgecrest. How long were you in Ridgecrest before you started bringing some businesses in? And same question for you for Lakeport, Charles? Yeah, Barry, Barry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot. A little bit of delay there. Yeah, I think it took, it took probably about a year to get the first few tenants. Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, and that's the story of real estate. It's not an overnight, an overnight success problem. We, we were about a year into that working with them. We worked with Lakeport for three years. We work on one annual contracts and we've worked with them three straight years. And we're about to start our fourth year with the city of Lakeport.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question, I'm going to start with Charles on this one. This was a question asked by one of our public members regarding, Charles, in your proposal, it refers to economic development initiatives that you would help work with the city on. Retail com, Retail Coach, yeah, yeah. So if you could address that, and that specifically was from your proposal, but Barry, I'll give you a chance to talk to that first. So we'll start with Charles on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. And one of the things we say in our company is, you know, community development precedes economic development. And it's such an encompassing practice that when we talk about what goes into the economic development pieces, we have partners that do housing studies, hotel studies as well. But in this case, and I think what, how it pertains to Placerville is more the downtown approach of how do we make sure that we have a strong downtown core that is separate, but still helps maintain the overall attraction of businesses to Placerville? So while we were focused on national and regional guys filling up some of those spaces, we want to make sure that we're doing everything from community development. We have partners and resources from across the country that focus on, hey, how do you do everything from, you know, beautification projects? Or how do you do, you know, your teneting and working with those downtown property owners? To say, hey, we want to make sure we keep our prime real estate for retail and make sure that our services, other ones, all fit in and that they're all pointing in the right direction to create this destination for people to come and hang out, eat, dine, drink, because that's what's ultimately going to draw people to downtown. And that helps your notoriety for the visitor and the tourism to all push together. So all those things that help create a vibrant community are things that we've involved with. And we've done everything to assist and connect our clients to, you know, brownfields grants. We've worked and helped their clients attract other monies through the kind of the extra label uses of how we put our data and our packaging together, just to make sure that through our other grants, that, you know, we make sure our project has as far reaching tentacles and impressions as possible.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Barry, do you want to address that issue a little bit?
Yeah. Could you, could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, and, and this was a part of the Retail Coach proposal, just so you know, Barry, hopefully you can hear me okay. They refer to economic development initiatives that they will work on with the city. And so just kind of address, are there things that you would look at? The more general in nature economic development initiatives to, to improve the environment, the business environment?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, I think probably one of the big things is just looking and understanding how a city can help make that process easier in terms of working with somebody. I worked for 23 and a half years for four different cities in California as a community and economic development director for those places. And so I think making sure that the process is easy in terms of permitting, planning, any plan, approvals, permits, all those kinds of things, I think that's important. That's a big part of that. And those cities that get that and understand that are going to succeed. Those that don't struggle sometimes. So I think, you know, community development, I think is important in understanding. Again, the comment earlier was to, was to preserve those areas that are needed for retail. I think that's important too. You know, there's, there's been a lot of change kind of lately in terms of doing mixed use projects and whatever else. But it, you need to kind of preserve those good retail areas. And so I think that's really important. And certainly we will work closely with the city and look at those community and economic development initiatives. But I think understanding that, you know, that retail especially has changed so much in the last, even before the pandemic, but it's changed now after the pandemic. You know, the places that the Rite Aids, you know, that they're closing a lot of stores all over. Same thing with Office Max, Office Depot, Staples, those places. People are using the internet a lot more for some of those services. And so you need to kind of really, when you do your marketing analytics, look at and seeing who's a good fit for that void. Again, your downtown area is different than some of the other areas not located in the downtown. And so those, those chain stores are much more appropriate for those other locations. And usually the owners of those centers are going to want to have good, strong credit tenants. And that's what you get when you have a national restaurant or a restaurant.
All right, thank you, Barry. This next one, and I'm going to start with you, Barry, I think I did Charles last time. In there, you talk about, once we've finished the initial analysis, they will begin the recruitment process. And they talk about how that may be. And there's references to emails and phone calls to business, et cetera. The question was, how does that actually work? Can you give a little more detail in what your contact methods are and what the process is to contact companies that you may want to recruit?
Sure. Sure. You know, I've been a member of ICSC, which is International Conference of Shopping Centers for a number of years. And in fact, the big conference in Las Vegas, which is in the middle, or the end of May, this will be my 32nd one I've attended this year. Been in this for quite a while. But we also, will also be in Monterey with a booth at the Northern California ICSC. And so a lot of the retailers, the restaurants, their brokers will be there at that event. We set up a series of meetings for that. You don't ever really get something done at those meetings. You want to get your foot in the door and, and keep those, keep that dialogue going. But so we do, we do ICSC events in Las Vegas, Monterey, and it used to be in San Diego for Western Division. It's now moving next year to Palm Springs. So, and then there's also another one in LA in February. So again, we've been very involved with that. And so, you know, it's something where you want to keep pushing and trying to understand opportunities for potential users and start that dialogue. But use these, these trade shows in terms of trying to continue those discussions. But then you've got to follow up again with phone calls, emails and everything else to go ahead and try to push those sites that you have. No one really wants to talk about coming to a city. They want to know the vocation, how big is it, you know, who owns it and how it can be there. So it's, it's a, it's starting that dialogue and having those conversations about that.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Charles?
Yeah, absolutely. And ICSC is no doubt a big part of, you know, this world. And, you know, we have a presence and booths set up at Monterey and ICSC Western, Las Vegas. And because we're a national company, we attend about 12 other ones across the country as well. In addition to kind of a new circuit starting up called Retail Live, which are one day events popping up across the country, where we, you know, approach this two ways. One is the corporate side where we are actively involved. Like say we have around 40 projects active across the country at any one time. So we are constantly talking to their, their head corporate folks, figuring out who's over, you know, the Western region, where are they looking at, what are their initiatives? You know, because data is a big piece about it, looking into, hey, how does it fit our model? What does it fit their site criteria? But at the end of the day, it's also about relationships. And I think this is probably where, you know, our work over the past 25 years has really put us ahead in terms of figuring out, hey, we know who the, the main site selector, the main brokerage firm from, you know, CBRE or the Econnic Group out of San Francisco that, that cover a lot of the Northern California areas. We've got projects going on, starting in Tracy and Roseville as well, to where we're talking to these key decision makers, both, both at corporate and their representatives from brokerage side, that we are constantly in communication with them. They know that we vet their sites. We don't pass them sites that don't make sense to them because we have a reputation to withhold on, on that side as well, to make sure that we are giving them good sites to look at. So we're a trusted voice for, for them in terms of figuring out, how do they meet their quota for a number of stores to drop? So I, I think the relation side of them, just being in constant communication with them. I mean, there are a number of brokers that, you know, I call, text. Our, our team is in constant communication with as well. And I think that's ultimately how you can get them, take a look at a site that maybe they've passed over in the past or maybe something that they haven't quite looked at. And we can go and say, hey, you know, why have you not looked at this? Why did it not make sense to you? And say, hey, well, if you look at it this way, if you've seen, you know, the latest mobile location traffic counts that pushed through that, it's different than it was two or three years ago when you, when you last pushed. But then the, you know, the first tier is corporate, the second tier is the brokers, and then the third tier and so much more of it now, more so after COVID, is the franchise side as well. And for smaller communities, a lot of these, you know, new restaurants and pieces that go on the, you know, the more traditional sides of sites are franchise driven. Where we go and actively pursue who the franchisees who have rights over the area and go in that direction. So we really do approach it holistically, try to find who the right key decision makers are and establish those relationships, leverage the ones that we already have in place to get as many eyeballs on our opportunities and our client communities as possible.
All right, thank you, Charles. The last question, two questions are where I think we can combine those together also, was related to, and you, both of you, I think, have talked to this a little bit regarding big box or franchise businesses as opposed to what we would like to see in our downtown area, which are historic downtown, not franchise businesses and individuals, and what your, your different approach would be to each, each of those scenarios? So let's start with Charles on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. So when you have the, the national franchisees or, you know, the big name brands that we all recognize, you have events like ICSC, you have, you know, a rolodex to go out, you know who the decision makers are. You know, the more independent businesses, you know, the entrepreneurship driven pieces, there is not the rolodex of people. You have to go and do the grassroots method. And it's everything from going and canvassing, you know, competitive communities of areas that are close to you to have maybe one or two operations, say, hey, you've got two coffee shops somewhere around the Sacramento area. What's it going to take to get your third opportunity going here? This is something that, that we excel at. We have several platforms that we use that can help us identify some of these smaller independent concepts. And then we go and we go everything from messaging on LinkedIn, calling their numbers, going through their Instagram pages, because these are small businesses usually, trying to establish that relationship with those small business owners. And it's something that we've been successful at expanding them. As the most recent one is brewery down in the Coachella Valley. We were working with the city of India and we went and were able to get a brewery from elsewhere in the Coachella Valley to come to India, open up a pizza and tins tap room and tasting room. I think it opens sometime this summer, one of their opening piece. But that was one that's very grassroots movement. We had to basically go walk into their brewery, ask for their brewmaster and have a conversation with them and talk about, hey, what's it going to take for you guys to do expansion mode? So those are the types of things that we talk about downtown because it is such a different approach. You have to be very much hands on and our team is very much used to that and finding out, hey, who are, you know, these, these small businesses owners? What are the cities that we think are in our region that could be a fit, that, that match? up, that we want to vision and try to find, hey, what will it take to open up that second shop? The flip side of that is going in and, you know, hosting interest meetings and workshops in the local area, that do we have, you know, some local entrepreneurs that are interested in opening a business? How do we give them the confidence with the data, help get them connected with resources and say, we just lost an Office Max, we need somebody in town that's going to supply office supplies and stationery and some of those things that maybe a local business can come take the place of, but we want to make sure that we work and cultivate that locally at the same time.
All right. Thank you. Barry?
Yeah, absolutely. There is a difference, obviously, between going after the major retailers, the national folks, but, you know, going and looking at more of the mom-and-pops, the independent-owned businesses, it is more challenging, but it can be done, and something that I think that we've been able to do a lot of that, too, with our clients. Really, I think we've done work in Rancho Cordova before, we've done work in Gulf before, so we kind of understand the Sacramento area and the brokers that worked at that, I think, would be active in Placerville. And so I think talking to them about some of those more independent small businesses, not your chain businesses, is getting their feedback and who might be good fits and who might want to, you know, open that second location or third location in Placerville. And so it's challenging, but it certainly can be done, and we'd love to have the opportunity to do it.
All right. Thank you, Barry. Mayor, I think that was all the questions I had noted, so.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you both very much. Appreciate your time in answering those questions. I have one more question for Dave Warren, and I apologize, because you're probably not going to be able to answer this easily, but I'm going to try anyways. And that's the cost recovery question, you know? If they were able to bring in two big stores, two medium stores, two small stores, you know, is that recovery a year, is it five years, you know?
I guess, sales tax.
Yes.
How much? That's a tough question. I wouldn't be able to answer that. That would be a tough.
Let me take a shot at first, and Dave, you can jump in. That's why I asked for that information from Dave. For example, Rite Aid and Office Max combined, and broadly burned sales taxes approximately forty-two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
So if you look at a contract between thirty thousand and forty thousand, one, two years, you would recover those funds once you brought the business in. Dave, sorry, I didn't even jump in, but you can add two.
Absolutely right.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted an idea. I appreciate that. Yeah. Any other questions from the council? Okay, I'm going to open this to public comment for comments now.
Yeah, Ruth Michelson, business owner and building owner. So thank you for the presentation. It was illuminating, and I just want to start by saying, you know, it's your money. Go ahead. I mean, I'm not going to try to influence you either way about spending it. It's really, I think the really salient question is, again, what we've been asking, what are you going to get out of it, and also looking at the do-nothing option of not spending the money. I wanted to just mention a few facts that you may or may not be aware of, but since the 2008 economic downturn, large box stores have stopped being built. And so right now, actually, big-box stores are being rented out fairly well. All the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond stores are being snapped up because there is a shortage of big-box stores. So that's one thing to know. The other thing is downtown. The biggest issue, I think, or one of the biggest issues we're facing is, for instance, so a therapy store recently sold, and then the investors who bought it, a couple of brothers, are asking rent at six thousand dollars for a therapy store. Now, doing simple math, if you did, well, that's, if you're open every day, that's more than two hundred dollars a day in rent, which means if you're bringing in product and half of it is profit, you have to do four hundred dollars a day, and that doesn't include paying for people, paying for utilities, insurance, et cetera. It's really a very, almost impossible situation for the kind of traffic we have downtown. So yes, we are fearful that potentially someone's going to propose a chain for that store, because mom-and-pops, who makes that kind of money? We don't make that kind of money. I'll tell you something about Supply Sergeant. I know an Odd Fellow, and that's who owns the building, is the Odd Fellows, and I asked her about their plans, and they're going to open in about six months. They've taken down all the interior walls, they're going to make it into two businesses with two entrances. Aaron Brothers, who were there the last three years, I mean, their last three years of being there, they paid sixty-five hundred dollars a month. And that's the expectation of Odd Fellows, but at least it'll be split in two, and they have three thousand square feet. So that's fifteen hundred square feet per business, and they're hoping to get at least thirty-two hundred dollars. So, you know, and just to add one more piece to this, you know April 1st, the minimum wage for fast-food-type restaurants like sourdough, if there's sixty or more locations nationwide, goes to twenty dollars. And, you know, Dana already is barely making it, and I think it's fine for me to tell you, it's going to kill them, there's nothing that you can do about it. But, okay, is my time up? Well, I think that's the highlights of what I wanted to say. I mean, the city could help in some ways if I could speak just another minute, or should I stop? If you want me to stop, I'll stop.
You know, seeing there's such a small audience, I'm going to allow one extra minute for everyone tonight.
Thank you so much for that. I mean, Hayday closed, and I don't think I'm saying anything out of school, the Health Department came in, and, gosh, they were there for eighteen years, and that's something that maybe the city could have worked with them a little bit more. That business was for sale for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I don't know, so then he just decided to throw the towel in, and it's not for sale anymore. Public House, just so that you know, is for sale right now for five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So they want to move, they want to relocate. So there's a lot of shifting going on downtown, but I think our problems are bigger than someone coming in. I guess I've just outlined both areas. Big Box, I think, could very well take care of itself, and Downtown, we've got some very specialized problems. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ruth.
Hi, city family. I'm Tony Wendell. I own TW Bonkers. I'm blessed to be one of those situations where I do have a downtown business, where I can sustain a little bit of extra rent and a little bit of extra back and forth with regards to the funding of my employees and whatnot. We have a good thing there. I'm a little worried about chains coming down, but I'm not totally worried about chains coming down to Main Street as much as I'm excited about the fact that, after listening to both of these consultants, that they did address with the questions, that you guys answered some of the questions that I had about it, but chains, there's chains everywhere. It's pretty obvious that our community is excited about chains, as you can see from the excitement from Dunkin' Donuts coming in and Dutch Brothers, everybody's super excited. All you hear about on Facebook is Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's, please. But as a longtime resident here, too, what I'd like to say to the consultants to take a look at up in our new shopping centers, that we have so many amazing opportunities in Broadway and Placerville Drive to bring some stuff up, but remember Beano's, remember Everly's Music. There's opportunities that we could have, that we can look back on things, and remember that place we loved so much, that we don't necessarily need to have chain stores to anchor everybody in here. I think if we look at the greater good of all of Placerville, the big community, that we love all these awesome things, we could always go to chain stores, drive twenty more minutes, it's okay. The Target down over here, it's not nearly as cool as the Target that's in El Dorado Hills, it doesn't take much more than ten minutes to get there. And I think we should expand our vision a little bit to look at, let's recruit some stores that have some great ideas, that can maybe last and live here for a long time, like I'm planning on doing, and becoming a really, really fun kind of a business and a town that you can go everywhere and bring business and tax dollars into that world. So hopefully, that's all I really wanted to say, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tony. I know you have something to say, Sue.
Ah, yes, I have something to say. I really feel like that Placerville has a draw all by itself, and maybe these guys, I don't know, they don't live here, they've never been here. I'm not sure if they would come here and spend enough time to really understand this area and this town, because a lot of the things that got mentioned, we already have. There's stores on Missouri Flat Road, there's stores in downtown, I mean, there are going to, there's always going to be stores coming and stores going. That's just life in the, life in the United States, is that some of these places are failing. Rite Aid is going out because their whole business is going under. And somebody could tell me why that is, but I think part of it is they got too big for their britches, and they didn't keep themselves small enough to be actually useful. And I think the same thing is true for Office Max. It's very difficult to go to Office Max and just get one ink cartridge for your printer and one ream of paper. No, they want to sell you a whole box of paper, five reams or ten reams. What we need is a small enough office supply store that you can go in and you can get what you need and not be inundated with this huge place you have to walk around for five miles to find what you need, and find that if you want to buy just one pen, good luck. If you want to buy just one ream of paper, you have to almost fight for it. I think that in order to get value out of these consultants, they would have to come here and actually try to understand Placerville itself. And I don't see, from what they said, I don't see that happening.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, that was our whole public, so we'll bring that back to the council for discussion. Mr. Morris? Well, final, who wants to make a comment?
No.
Yeah, I will. They took the time to be on here. If any of our, either of our vendors want to make just a two-minute follow-up statement, we'll allow that.
Let's do, so they know who they are. Barry, do you want to start? Just any final comments or address anything that you feel was not addressed here?
Sure. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity tonight to share some about us and answer your questions. And I have been to Placerville, and I've been there a couple of times, and so while my office is in Southern California, I'm in Northern California a lot. And so it's something that we want to, part of that initial process is we want to understand the community and everything about it, and I think that's certainly worth a visit up there to do that and understand some of the nuances. And again, I've been there before in the past, too. So looking forward to the opportunity, hopefully, to work with you. And we have a lot of experience having done this. I started up the division of the company for HDL almost ten years ago, and so we've done a lot of work for retail recruitment for a number of clients around the state. And so I look forward to the opportunity, and thank you.
All right. Charles?
Yes, and thanks, Peter, for having me on as well tonight to talk about our approach. You know, I think boots on the ground is super critical to projects. That's why, you know, we say that we're going to spend at least three different trips to the community, but because we've also got adjacent projects going on Northern California from Gilroy, Tracy, and Roseville, that even though I'm in Dallas, Texas, I see four of the last five weeks and three of the next five weeks, I'm going to be in California myself. So I'm up in that area very frequently. So our goal is to be as visible as possible in our client community to look at. So I'd say, all we do is retail recruitment. It's been our specialty for close to twenty-five years, being the facilitator, connecting local property owners, stakeholders, and brokers and small businesses. So that would be our focus, and look forward to the opportunity to serve the city. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate both your comments. All right, we will bring this back to the council for discussion. Does anyone want to jump in there first? Councilmember Sarah Gosa?
I'll go. Well, first, I want to thank both of our speakers from both companies that were here. Thank you for your comments and your context of how you approach these. I think I'm treating this one a little bit like we treated the trip with the Chamber, which is, I just don't know if it's the best use of funds, the highest and best use of funds at this point. And it's not anything that our two presenters said, I think they gave some very good ideas and have good resumes. I think we're just in a, we're in a very unique period of time in terms of just where we are from a country, and, you know, where are interest rates going to go? You know, there's a lot of big questions out there that are going to affect people's ability to invest and to come in and do things. And so I don't really see a lot of movement happening, probably, within the next year, regardless of who we brought in, just because I think there's a lot of uncertainty in the market. And so I would certainly entertain this, maybe in another twelve months, maybe after we know who the president's going to be. I mean, a lot of things will dictate, you know, a change or a continuation of where we are economically, and we still don't know if we're going to hit, you know, more of a recession or not. It's been sort of a balancing act, but you can still see the pressure of inflation is not going away. So I just don't, I hate for us to do this now and then to think like, oh, you know, they just, they didn't bring us anything, but I don't know that there will be a lot to bring at this point in time. So my suggestion is that we don't go forward at this point and just wait a little bit more time, and, you know, we can see who comes forward on the natural. I do think there may be some folks out there that are looking. I know I've had a couple of conversations with folks, but I just think this might not be the best use at this current time. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole?
I think I'm sort of in the same boat of, I kind of feel like I don't know on this one. I don't feel strongly that this is the best use of funds or that it would achieve bringing in new businesses to those vacancies that we have. I'm not opposed to entertaining it in the future, but I think I'm sort of in the same spot. I do think maybe there's some things we could do with potentially throwing stuff, some stuff to our Peak folks to look at and come up with, you know, ideas or recommendations kind of in the interim, while we're sort of waiting a year on if the city takes any action related to this versus just letting the businesses and the business owners and, you know, the market sort of run its course and see what happens.
Thank you.
Lots to unpack here. I, when I was looking at this and when we were prepping for the agenda review, I actually think that hiring a business development organization is a good idea. I will defend consultants. I work, I have worked and work in places that I don't live. In fact, I've done it most of my consulting life. I work in communities, large and small, where I don't live, but you go and you find out, and that's what these people would do. They would go and find out, and they would, they would know this place, and that would not be a barrier, that is not a thing. Good consultants do that, and these two organizations, well, HDL, we've had experiences with, and this other, it sounds like a very good organization. So that's really not a concern for me, is that they're not from around here, they don't know. I would like to not necessarily abandon the idea for another year. The other thing, too, is lots of times your business development happens when times are not great, and so you want to be still thinking in that mode. I'd like to kick this back to the Peak, because for one thing, the Peak actually has some interesting people on it. We have, you know, Mr. Kaiserman, for example, who has started business, created businesses, has been a successful businessperson, and knows a lot about this stuff. And, you know, Deborah Miller, now she's not a commercial, I don't think her forte is commercial real estate, but she's a real estate broker, she's been the head of the local real She's been the head of the local real estate. She would understand that side of it. We have business owners on our peak. We could talk to them about this. You know, for example, what are, I mean, I don't know what the Office Max people are, the people that own the building. Might even be people, might be a thing that owns the building. What are they doing? They're not sitting there on their thumbs. They're probably looking and trying to recruit. I'm assuming that's happening up there where the Rite Aid used to be. But I do believe that at some point it would be value-added to bring in some folks that are dedicated to this purpose. And I'm not so sure a year's a good idea to wait. But I would like to maybe let the peak chew on it and maybe they could engage these folks a bit more and, and get a little bit more of a fine, fine-tooth comb on this thing. And I don't know what, I appreciate the comments about the land, the property owners on Main Street. I don't know what we can do about unexpected, unrealistic expectations about rent. Presumably what happens is they sit on their properties. Unfortunately, some of those people own those buildings outright. They don't have a debt, which means they could leave those things sit there forever. And when, and this is, I'm just going to say this, and this is what happens when you get a little too picky and choosy about who you let into your town to do business, because those people will dictate whether those storefronts ever get filled up. Not us. And I'm sorry about Heyday. If you've got problems with, A, if you've got problems with the health department, that's the county, and I'm pretty sure we have no control over that. And so, you know, coming in here and saying, well, maybe the city could have done something, convincing the health department to do something, I, you'd go for it. The choice is this, if you start to really get this, we're looking for unicorns for businesses, you'll end up with a lot of empty storefronts. I've lived in this town for 40 years. I probably lived in this town longer than almost everybody here. I first came here in 1982. It used to be a revolving door on those businesses in Main Street. There's actually been some stability over the last 10, 15 years or so. And my gut tells me we're just looking, going back to maybe the more revolving door parts that used to be the businesses on that street. So I don't want to panic when it comes to Main Street because for most of my time here, I mean, the store you own used to be a bunch of other things. It's been several other things in the time I've lived here. Same thing with yours, same thing, well, not Kombelix, that was Kombelix forever. But, you know, anyway. I would like to kick this back to the peak and with some direction to kind of, and this might be the difficult part. What would do, frequently we ask the peak to do things that we don't really tell them what we want. And so maybe we give it back to the peak with some direction on maybe going out and finding out what's going on with those property owners, finding out what's going on with some of these things and asking them their wisdom. What do they think about what's going on? I'd go talk to Leonard Grado. He's done a pretty good job bringing in businesses that weren't here before. Now, he fixed up the building nice, which helped. But maybe we could start doing that. And I wouldn't abandon the two guys on the phone because I think that we'll be, maybe talking to them sooner rather than later.
Well, I'm in the same camp that I don't want to abandon the conversation.
Yeah.
I would like peak to do a deep dive. Like you said, perhaps we need to come up with better direction.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of them doing outreach, discovering the barriers and the attractions and really understanding in more depth, some of the opportunities and challenges we have. I think it's a conversation I want to keep alive and a discussion I want to keep going because, you know, I've only been here 25 years, John. I mean, you really, you have me. But I can remember when we have a lot more storefronts filled. And I would like to see us proactively move back to that position.
I can remember when there were a lot more empty too.
Well, and, and I think even to Ruth's point, I mean, there are, there are some things that are just out of our control. I mean, the reality is, is that when you have minimum wage going towards that, you can't even have a successful business on Main Street last because if you're going to get paid $20 an hour or $25 an hour to work, you know, in the kitchen at Marshall Hospital, you're going to have a hard time paying somebody even $15, $16 an hour at your store. So it's just, you know, we have these baked-in amounts of minimum wage that have passed in certain sectors because of labor's influence at the state capital that were, with the hope of driving the amount up for everybody. But what's going to happen is that you will see more and more small businesses close their doors because they just can't handle the increase in amounts. And that's just the reality of the situation. Unless you're a family business that only has family working, it's going to be very difficult to have employees, pay workers' compensation, pay unemployment insurance, and buy product and keep your store going. So there will be things on Main Street that I think are very difficult for us to have any real control over. I think, you know, our retailers, the larger corporations are going to have more, because of volume, they're going to have ability to do more things. And so reality is, it's going to be on the two, you know, on both Broadway and on Placerville Drive where, you know, that's probably where we're going to see people like this help us. I'm not really looking to them to solve our problems on Main Street. I do hope people have better business plans too on Main Street because some things come in and it's like, I don't think you thought this through very much.
Cake pops.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion specifically?
Um, let's see. I don't, we probably need to provide more direction to the peak than this discussion, although you might, can you gin up some thoughts? I've run out.
No, I think I understand what you're talking about. I was thinking about, number one, through maybe a subcommittee of peak, we contact the two property owners, the, well, those two major property owners.
Yeah.
Then the others also.
Sure.
And talk to them. And so number one would be to find out where do they stand? What is their recruitment process? What are they doing, et cetera? And any leads that they might have and offer our assistance with that. Number two would be to talk to them about, you mentioned the barriers. What, are there things that, from their perspective as businesses, that are holding them back and things that perhaps the city could be, do? Whether it's, you know, are costs too high? We may not be able to do anything with that, but is that a factor? Is there development standards that they object to, et cetera? Just similar to what we do on our business outreach visit, what, what does the city do that, that is affecting you, either positive or negative? And get that, that. And then at some point, I think probably I would invite our two speakers tonight to come and make a presentation to peak.
Yeah.
Where they have a little bit more time to plan and plan that presentation and, and then let, let peak see that and determine, do they want to make a recommendation to the council along those lines? So that, those are the kind of the guidelines that I heard that perhaps we could do.
Yeah, so we're looking at option four, take no action at this time and provide further direction to staff.
Yes.
Even though it says three, after three.
I can't count, sorry.
So do we need a motion for that or?
I move that. I move three slash four.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously.
Our lawyer didn't jump at us.
Thank you, thank you, Charles and Barry. We appreciate you being here tonight and I will be in touch with you going forward, what we may want to do.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we will move to item 13, council reports from other agency meetings. All right, so first we have Eldorado County Transit Authority. We received and filed the fiscal year 2425 operating budget and capital plan and budget announcements. Bass Lake Park and Ride will be opening in May and contactless payment is coming to the buses. Right, Transportation Commission? John?
I did not go.
That's right, you weren't there.
I was not there.
You're right, you're right. I think the biggest item we did was review the project report for the county and the city.
That's fine.
And, yeah, that, we know most all those projects because we're in the middle of them, but that was the big item that we had at the Transportation Commission. Lafco?
We did not meet. Our next meeting is on March 27th.
Great, thank you. Secog?
We have not met yet. Our next meeting will be next Thursday and we will be doing that in the City of Woodland. We're doing our little tour, so Yolo Woodland will be on this, this month's tour.
Nice, nice. Councilmember Yarber is not here to report on Pioneer. Placerville Fire Safe Council gave their presentation, so I won't reiterate that. Just the March 23rd event at Midtown Mall, don't forget it. And Opportunity Knox?
Um, there was a meeting I was not able to attend, but all of the action items I reported on in the last meeting passed.
Okay, great. Okay, well, 14, requests for future agenda items? Oh, public comment on our comments. Seeing none, we'll bring that back. Requests for future agenda items. Seeing none? Do I need to take a public comment on no comment? Okay. Number 15, city manager and staff reports, 15.1, receive and file February 2024 police report, Chief Ren.
Good evening. This is the last time you'll see the form like this. I actually tried to do, working with my staff, create something similar to what we have, but then it turned out to be confusing. And, you know, when we're putting out statistics, the last thing we want is to confuse the public.
Agreed.
So next, next month, you'll see the new form, which will look a lot like the old form. So we've been pretty flat to include our 290s and our high-risk offenders, no spikes in any of those numbers. There's, the only thing comparison-wise that was different from last month compared to January was our citations. I took a look at that. Then I was reminded that we had a OTS operation during the month of January, right out of the holidays. So that, that always tends to spike those statistics because it's a zero-tolerance enforcement effort. Other than that, things are going the direction I would hope they would go. And nothing, again, has spiked or caused any kind of concern. Very safe community that we live in.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor has a question.
Have you started your kitchen thing or is it done?
We ordered all the cabinets and the countertops and the appliances. We did that locally through Home Depot. We're trying to keep everything local.
Excellent.
Those will be here within a month. We start demo in two weeks where we strip and then, yeah, come on over with your hammer.
Oh, I got sawzall, I can do it all.
Yeah, it'd be good times.
Yeah, if I can use a sawzall, I'll, I'll be there.
Yeah, I got two of them.
I have a sawzall.
So we have, we have the CAD plans all drawn up, working with the people at Home Depot. They actually do a fantastic job for anybody that wants to use Home Depot. They do well for us.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll demo flooring, paint flooring, and then cabinet install, appliance install, and then it should be a completed project estimated about three weeks max to get everything set and.
Let us know when you do the demo.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on 15.1?
I was really impressed to see your response time. Down at around three minutes, I think. That makes me feel much, very safe in this community, so thank you.
It is, you know, all the thanks goes to the team from the dispatchers who are receiving the calls immediately and putting them and getting them out to the officers, to the officers in the field who are diligent about taking care of their, their assigned beat areas. You know, again, these are, these are averages, so a lot of times we're quicker on scene, especially when there's life safety issues. I mean, officers have caught people coming out of windows during burglaries. So it's, it's a, it's a fantastic, it's a fantastic response time.
Great, thank you. We really appreciate that. Okay, 15.2, receive and file February fire station 25 run report, Chief Cordero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Within your report there, you'll see the call volumes for both Engine and Meg 25. They're both busy again in February, averaging over 10 calls a day. And, you know, I would like to point out that, you know, this, this winter's been a little interesting for us with a lot of the predicted storms. And we've been working closely with Cal OES and they provided us with some additional funding for the county to upstaff additional resources. We've upstaffed during, for the storm events, and really that's kudos to our crews because when, when we received that funding, that's the first hurdle, but then we had to put guys on the engine and gals on the engine to fill those seats and, and, you know, trying to solicit overtime to the folks when like, hey, there's a storm coming in, things are not going to be fun and exciting. But they've, they've really stepped up and filled those, you know, they recognize, you know, the potential impacts to the citizens and really have stepped up and covered those calls for us. Also, I'd like to note, just you'll see one of the photos of our fire prevention rig parked in front of Station 49. And as part of our ongoing annexation process with Diamond Springs Fire, about a year ago, the fire marshal from Diamond Springs retired. And so through our shared service, our fire marshal, Chief Sterling, assumed duties as a fire marshal for both agencies, streamlining and getting that effectiveness going. Recently, we moved our fire prevention bureau from our headquarters in Camino into Station 49. So there's now a crew of three that's working in fire prevention. It gives one common location for contractors and citizens that need efforts from the bureau. And it's a little better centrally located. So they have been there for about two weeks now. They're still getting kind of situated, but they are operating out of Station 49 and we're continuing to move on with our annexation process, looking for, we've got support from Senator Alvarado Gill. We had a CalPERS item we have to get addressed, so SB 1240, please support it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
No.
No? Open this to public, sorry.
We're just going to say if there's a bill out there, we should definitely, you should bring forward, we can do a resolution to get a letter from the city as well.
I'll have that from Mr. Morris tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Great.
April 10th is the first day that it's being heard, so we're on a timeline for that. But we're happy and grateful for the work of Senator Alvarado Gill. She's been a huge advocate for us.
Thank you. Great. Sue?
I thought that the number of runs that are made for medical emergencies were just amazing. For both the fire and the ambulance, just, that's an incredible workload.
Yeah.
Congratulations and thank you for your support for the Fire Safe Council.
Yes, appreciate all of our firefighters and police officers. They do a lot during the storms and times that we really need them. Okay, 15.3, developmental services departments, development permitting statistics for the month of February 2024, Mr. Reves?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is sort of what we typically see in the month of February. It's a little bit cooler towards the end of winter. We're a little bit down in permits and inspections. Some of the revenues are up for building, if you see, but that's because of some of the larger projects we have going on and we're pulling in a lot more of the fees. But we're hoping that as springtime comes that things will start to turn around. So unless the council has any questions on the statistics.
Any questions from council?
Pierre, I noticed that there are still permits being issued for solar. And, you know, when you listen to everything with NEM 3, it like destroyed, it did serious damage to the solar installation industry. But I notice people are still getting them. Are these on private properties or the commercial properties or mixed bag or what?
They're on private properties.
And they're on private, so people are still going out and putting solar panels on their home?
Solar is still pretty popular.
Yeah, okay.
Still, I think there's still some incentives out there that people are.
Are they doing batteries on these? Do you, I mean?
Haven't, you know, I haven't seen a lot of the battery packs lately.
Okay, okay.
But we have seen some.
Yeah, well, Councilmember Yarber has said there's something coming from Pioneer that we're going to.
All love?
Yeah, it's a lease program, kind of like what SolarCity did at the beginning, prior to Tesla buying them, which would be a lease program. So you'd get a fixed rate.
Right.
For X amount of years. And then they would own, I guess they would get any of the tax credits over the life of the, the time they have them on your roof.
Interesting. Any public comment on 15.3? Seeing none?
So Mayor, if I may, I've got one other report that I'd like to give to the council.
Yes, we'd love to hear it.
A little more of a personal report, but I think it's important to give because it really, you know, at least from my perspective, it just shows what a great community we live in. Of course, there's two sides of every coin because it was maybe the bad side of the coin that caused me to see the good side of the coin. But let me just start by saying, you will probably all know the truck I drive that I've had for over 30 years.
I do know that truck.
305,000 miles on it, you know? It's a great little truck. It's amazing. Well, that truck was stolen today from the third floor of the parking garage at about 5:15. It was kind of amazing because Deana Howey from my office called me on the phone and said, I think somebody stole your. said, I think somebody stole your, your truck. So I ran out there. I mean, the only time I got a call from any city staff that was worse than somebody stealing my truck was some years ago when the chief of police, Ann Cleve Morris, called me when I'm standing in line at the Safeway and said, Pierre, I think your house is on fire. So that was not a good call.
Wow.
So back to the, so back to the truck. So as soon as I confirmed, I ran up there, my truck's gone. It was just a weird feeling, you know, wow, I really, I am a victim of car theft. So I called the dispatch and after confirming the theft, so I guess it was probably about maybe 10, 15 minutes later, Officers Eric Tudawon and Alex Smith arrived at City Hall to take statements, basically to get information from me about the stolen vehicle and then get information from Dina Howie, who is actually, she actually tried to stop the person because she saw him pulling out, she knew it wasn't me, some strange character wearing a hoodie and I don't go around in hoodies, at least not that often. Attempted to block him and so gave the description. Fortunately, I was able to find a picture of my truck on my cell phone that's clearly showed the license plate because everybody's asked, well, what's your license plate? God, I don't know. But I found two pictures with clearly show what the license plate was. So with that information, according to the officers, the license number would be posted throughout the region in some system, stolen car system. And they said that certain cameras and any of these cameras will ping the system and then law enforcement will then know that this stolen car is, is running about. Steve McCarter was able to find the video with the suspect in plain view and he forwarded that to the PD. And the officers know this character. I guess he's a common character that seems to, you know, rummage around within the city looking for bad stuff to do. So this person is a known problem, unfortunately a drug addict. So after that, and after everything was, was reported to the, to the authorities, Dina drove me home and all I could do was hope to get my truck back without it being destroyed because I thought, well, am I ever going to see it again? Is it on its way to Mexico? Who, who knows? But again, it's an older vehicle, so. So I get a phone call from Officer Amber Robinson at about 11 o'clock or a little thereafter as I'm trying to recover from the time change, so I'm in bed. And they, they, I was informed that my truck was stopped by CHP just west of Ice House. So the license plate was picked up as a stolen vehicle as it passed through the Myers Agricultural Checkpoint.
The egg checkpoints are worth something.
Isn't that something?
Wow.
So Amber, so Amber, so Officer Amber came and with the police dog to pick me up and take me to my vehicle. So, and I'm glad it was her driving and not, not me with somebody else because it was heavy, heavy fog. I mean, it was kind of scary, heavy fog and rainy. And then when we, there's the vehicle sitting there all by itself, nothing, nobody else around. An Eldorado County Sheriff Deputy was waiting by the car, making sure that nobody else was going to take it, I guess. So fortunately, when I looked at the car, nothing was stolen from the vehicle, but there was lots of stuff in the vehicle from, from the horse, from the, what I'm going to call the horse thief. So I never thought I would, I would never, I would, I never thought I would see my vehicle this soon. This is only six, seven hours after I first found out it was stolen. So that's police work and that's cooperation between our police department, CHP, Eldorado County Sheriff, they were all involved. So I just wanted to give a big thanks for the coordination of law enforcement agencies working together to catch this horse thief. I understand that he would be out, he will be out on the streets shortly, unfortunately, that's what I'm told, but hey, this is California. So back in the day, we used to hang horse thieves. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you for indulging my story.
Thank you for this story, Pierre. Truly, small towns, see something, say something, that's how you get stuff done quick and, and I do appreciate and love living in a small community and always appreciate staff stories.
I will just tell Placerville staff, please don't jump in front of a.
Yes, exactly.
Of a vehicle being stolen, but otherwise.
But maybe it'd be like a TJ Hooker thing where, like they jump on the hood, you know, and then just ride it for a while.
She was trying to block him with her car.
Oh, gutsy. Okay, that brings us to item 16, upcoming items. I will let everyone read those for themselves. And 17, adjournment at 8:04 PM.
It was, yeah.
Look at us, planning about three hour meetings.
I know.
You know, my first meeting was six hours.